All right. We all made it. How about that? Welcome, everybody, to the January 15th, 2025. Wow. CDV Dyna Planning Commission Meeting. On behalf of the rest of the Commission, we are grateful you are here in person and to those tuning in remotely, I say it every time, but your participation, your curiosity and your feedback is vital as we navigate change here together in Edina specifically regarding the ways in which we like to use our land. So we have two public hearings tonight. I'll go into more detail of what to expect for those particular things once we get to it. Like for those tuning in remotely, I'll provide you some info to call in. And we also have a couple of reports and recommendations. But more important than that, your input matters. So if you've sent us an email or you've gone to the city's engagement website, bettertogetheredina.org, and you've shared your thoughts, that has gotten to us and we commit to you that we'll consider that feedback as we make recommendations tonight for approval or denial of the requests. So without further ado, going to kind of what to expect for the agenda. So we'll have a call to order, roll call, then we'll approve tonight's meeting agenda, followed by the approval of the prior meeting's minutes from December 11th. We'll have a community comment period, which is your chance to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda, and that's for those who are just in the room. Then we have the two public hearings. We'll follow up that with reports and recommendations and then chair and member comments, staff comments and adjournment. So with that, we will kick this meeting off and call it to order, followed by roll call.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett. Oh, I'm sorry.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Commissioner Felt.
Here.
Commissioner Honeman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here again. All right, next we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. If there aren't any proposed changes, I'd welcome a motion.
Motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes from December 11th. Same thing.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 11th.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next we have the community comment period, and this, as I mentioned, is for those who are in attendance. Similar to a public hearing, you have three minutes to come up to a podium and share your thoughts about a matter that's not on tonight's agenda. State your full name, your address. When the light turns green, that means go, and when it's red, your time is up, please wrap it up. Is anyone here for community to comment? Okay, if you're shy, come on up. Okay. All right, we'll move on from that. Into our public hearings. So we have two public hearings tonight. As I mentioned, the first one is a front yard setback variance for 5115, 5120 Lake Ridge Road. For both of these public hearings, you can expect the following kind of process. So when someone comes before the city with a formal application, it triggers a 60-day rule, and in that time, we need to make a decision. The request is put forth by a resident or a developer or some other entity. Staff puts together a report based on all of the conditions, do some fact finding, engage other commissions, departments like engineering, and they put together this report for us with kind of a recommendation for approval or denial within that. They then put that into a presentation, which you'll see tonight, right now. And then we have an exchange back and forth, commission to staff, and then we open it to the applicant to do the same if they have a presentation or at least stand for questions. And we have a similar exchange. After that point, we open it to the public hearing, and that's a chance for those of you who are here in person, but also those tuning in remotely, to testify about this matter. So similar to the community comment, you'd have three minutes to do so. Once we get to that part, I'll provide you with the call in information. No need to do that right now. After the public hearing is closed, then we bring it back to the commission. We deliberate and make a recommendation for approval or denial. So without further ado, Kerry, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the Commission, and pinch hitting for Chris this evening on this variance request. It's for properties located on Lake Ridge Road. It's actually two properties that have been combined into one, located on Mirror Lake, just east of Lake Road. You can see on this graphic, there was an existing home on the northern lot, and the lot to the south was vacant, or is vacant. The proposal this evening is to tear down the existing home and build a new house on the new, what's now one lot rather than two. There'd be some trees removed on the site, but replaced per our tree ordinance that in additional review, should this variance be approved, would happen at the time of building permit to ensure compliance with the tree preservation ordinance. There's some limiting factors on this site. We have a 75-foot setback requirement on Mirror Lake. So that's the red line here is the structure setback requirement from the lake. And then also from Lake Ridge Road. The setback here is established from an average of the block. And what is impacting the required setback here is the house to the south is, I think it's about 82 feet back, which throws off that average. The house to the north has a 30-foot setback, and the next house over has a 27-foot setback. What's proposed here is a 30-foot setback, but the requirement based on that average is 46 feet. So you can see the buildable area on this quite large lot is restricted by those two setback requirements. All other city performance standards are met, all other setbacks are met, the height of the structure would be 35 feet, they could build up to 40 feet. Impervious surface, hardcover, all met as well. Here's a look at the house, a rendering of what the house would look like. This is from the street, and this would be the view from Mirror Lake. Here's the context rendering of the house to the north and the house to the south. So primary issue for consideration is the proposed variance criteria justified. Just quickly looking at our variance criteria, the main body of that is the practical difficulty. Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner that's not permitted by the zoning ordinance? Are there unique circumstances, and will it alter the essential character of the neighborhood? In this case, staff supports the variance. Practical difficulty is caused by those two setback, those two setback requirements that I mentioned, from the water and the street. Those circumstances are unique to the property. The rest of the homes on the side of the block are generally with a 30-foot setback, similar to what the applicant is proposing. Again, if that house were removed, this would likely be conforming. It wouldn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood along the street as it is consistent with those setbacks to the north. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report, and I can answer any questions you might have, as well as the architect and applicant are here as well.
Thank you, Kerry. Any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Alkire.
That is more of a curiosity than anything else. What's the definition of a one-story house? I thought I knew, but I don't think I do, because that's the way this house is described, and it doesn't look like one to me.
Yeah, I don't have our definition in front of me, but this seems at minimum a story and a half.
Okay, it's not important. I was just curious about that. That's all, thank you.
I'm gonna follow up every question with "that's not important." Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Director Teague, for the presentation. The house that exists currently on the lot at 5115, what's the setback to that currently?
Yeah, I believe that is a 30, it's about 32 foot, no, that's the... I can check the plan, I don't know that one off the top of my head. You can kind of see it here. It looks like it... Yeah, it's tough to say whether... You can kind of see the outline of the house right here. So it probably has about a, in the 40-foot setback range.
Okay. So what they're proposing really is to remove this home that exists currently, rebuild, just bring it up further, just about 30, 30 feet.
Yes, it'll pull it out of the, right now, it's currently within the lakeshore setback.
Okay.
Just in small places, but they're choosing to meet that 75-foot setback on the lakeside, which pushes the house into the front setback requirement.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you go back to the lot coverage? I just want to look at it again.
I think that's it. Welcome the applicant or team to come forward. If you have a separate presentation or just willing to stand for questions, introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Alexander with Alexander Design Group. I'm here with my associate Britt Farley, and then the homeowner's, Val Dowerty, is here also. I think Kerry covered everything pretty well. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for being here. Any questions, anyone? I guess we made it easy on you tonight, no questions.
Okay. The only comment I have is it's actually 5115 and 5121. That should be noted.
Yeah. It's odd with it being even.
Didn't pick that up in the packet before.
We'll make sure that's corrected come vote time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, as I mentioned, this is a public hearing, so we're moving to that part of the agenda. So for those people tuning in remotely, to participate, pull out your phone and call the following number, 312-535-8110. Enter access code 2631-367-7745. The password is 5454, and then press star three on your keypad to get into the queue to speak. Now, this should all be on the screen for you too, if you're trying to follow along. We'll give people at least a minute to kind of jump in, but while we wait, we'll look to those who are in the room that might be here looking to testify about this matter. Same goes as community comment, you have three minutes to do so. You can come forward to either podium, and when the light turns green, you have three minutes. When it turns red, your time's up. State your full name and address. Anyone here that would like to testify in person? Okay. So we'll give it about probably 30 more seconds. Is anyone in the queue to speak?
No.
No? 30 more seconds. Awkward silence.
That's what happens, you ask one opinion, you get three more. It has been one minute, and nobody has joined the call, so I think it is safe to proceed.
All right. Welcome, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, public hearing is closed, so coming back to the planning commission to deliberate, looking around, any comments, any motions?
For all the reasons stated by staff, and if no one else has any comments, I think I'm happy to move to approve for the reasons stated in the staff report.
I'll just make a comment on this one. I certainly agree that this is very positive from my perspective. I think one thing that I think we try to pay attention to is any encroachment on lake water, right, and runoff. And what was very promising, for me at least, is that the developers choosing to really maintain that 75-foot setback from the lake. And I think that's really important. We've had a lot of cases in the past where, you know, some homes, they wanted to extend and continue building, and it was just too close to the body of water. And this one doesn't do that, and the developer is trying to maintain that. On the front side of the home, clearly, the home to the south here has a much larger setback that throws the averages off. But if we were to look at the homes to the north, you know, 27 feet, 30 feet, and this one is just kind of falling within that 30-feet distance, that continuity seems like it's going to be a nice smooth transition still, right? So it's not going to be too drastic. And of course, you know, that house on the south kind of really pulled things down. So from an aesthetic perspective, I think this certainly works, right? The designs look great, it doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood, it's actually doing a really good job. The hardcoverage seems really in line, right? You could have built more to take up more of that space, but it's certainly within what's the acceptable range. And again, with lake water, that's a big concern. If you had more concrete, cars runoff, more stuff gets into the water, that's a big issue. But we're staying within that footprint for the hardcover percentages on the building coverage, and we're staying 75 feet off from the waterside. So for those reasons, I think this makes sense, and that's why I think most of my commissioners here would agree, and that's why we would probably speedily approve this one.
Great comment. And yeah?
Yeah, I agree with everything Commissioner Smith has said, and want to reiterate the one point, when we've got these kind of awkward cul-de-sacs or quasi cul-de-sacs, we have typically always approved these variances, so this is nothing different than what are normal for the past few years, as Ben.
Thank you. I guess back to the potential motion at hand.
And maybe I can just clarify, because of the motions to approve the variance, subject to the findings in the staff report, with the one clarification, that's for 5115, 5121 Lake Ridge Road.
I second that clarification.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck with your project and home. All right, thank you. All right, we're on to public hearing two of two. Planner Teague is back. This one's for, I'll let you explain it all, Kerry.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. So the application is a subdivision, but it's really a replat of three existing lots. Two of the lots are on Highwood Drive and one on Pine Grove. So here's a look at the site, it's just south of the variance that we just talked about. See Mirror Lake here, single-family homes all around this site. Here are the three properties that are involved. The home at 5229, note there's a home there. The home at 6012 is set right along the lot line, it's about five, six feet from the lot line, so very close. And 5235 is a vacant site. Closer look at the three lots. Here's an aerial, so you can see 5235 is a heavily wooded lot, and there's also some steep slopes on the site that really have made, makes the site difficult for development. It's been held in ownership with the property to the south, but recently, it was sold to the property owner at 6012, Pine Grove. Here's a street view of the site, you can see the mature trees, and it slopes up from the street. So again, here's a look at the existing lot, and the proposal is to shift the lot lines. So a portion of this existing lot goes to the lot to the west, a portion goes to the lot to the south, gives them a little breathing room here with a rear yard. There's an existing drainage utility easement that's standard along all lot lines in the city. There's no utilities within that easement, so they will be vacating that. And really, the purpose of this is to create this outlot that would be a conservation easement placed over it to preserve and protect the site as it sits today, protect those trees from removal. So again, here's the plat, replating. You need to plat property rather than just shift lot lines with the meets and bounds in order to create that outlot. So we're basically creating an unbuildable lot with this proposal. Here you can see the slopes that make it difficult to build within that area. So looking at the lot dimensions, again, those two lots get larger, the outlot, or what's becoming an outlot, gets smaller, but it's an unbuildable lot. So again, the purpose of the request is to establish that conservation easement over Outlot A, maintain in its natural state, it would not be used for any park purposes or trails, no structures can be built, trees can't be removed unless they're diseased or dead. The city would purchase that outlot, and it would be paid back over time from the neighbors. The city council reviewed this concept, it was back in April of 2024, and approved this concept and directed staff to go through the subdivision process and then prepare the assessment documents. For some of the neighbors along the block, we'll be paying that back to the city. So the city pays for the site upfront, but gets the cost back over time and then acquires the land, so the city is the actual fee owner, but there's that conservation easement that's placed over the site. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. I could stand for questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Day.
Why is, why is the city purchasing the lot?
To preserve the trees.
I understand, but I mean, conservation easements can be granted to cities without the city paying for it, so I'm curious why the city decided to do that, rather than request that the landowner simply deed the land as a conservation easement.
Yeah, decision that the council made. It's, I'm trying to think back to all of those discussions. It's really protecting those trees, putting it in a permanent easement, and they felt there's value in that, with the city acquires the land and gets paid back over time. So it's not that the city is buying the property, they're just providing financing for them.
The city would be responsible for all maintenance of that lot going forward. Is there anything about this lot, really, that makes it, I guess, special in any way in terms of the type of trees, the age of the trees, you know, the heritage trees? Is there anything, you know, I guess, any endangered species in this 0.47, I think, acre lot?
Yeah, it's a lot of mature oaks. I don't know what category they exactly fall in, whether they're heritage tree or not. But it is some beautiful trees in there with a lot of oaks.
Okay. And how many residents would be splitting this tax assessment?
Yeah, I believe it's seven, seven residents along the block, and then three on Pine Grove.
Okay. How was that number established? Was it volunteered, or was it just simply said, this is, so they all, seven of these residents benefit, or how did that come about?
Yeah, it's a lot of work that was put together by the applicant, Mr. Carter, who owns that property to the south, getting the neighbors together, each as their own amount that they're contributing.
Does the city have any set of criteria for establishing conservation easements in terms of they have to establish any kind of minimum benefit to the public? I mean, you know, I searched the code pretty high and low and looked for any ordinances. We really have nothing on conservation easements, any set of criteria for establishing when we purchase them, why we purchase them. Honestly, it seems like a bit of just kind of an impromptu movement here.
Yeah, it's a decision that each city council could make, you know, it could be part of an overall plat where outlots are established, but no, you know, the request here is this, in the planning commission's purview, it's your reviewing the subdivision, not necessarily the decision that the council has made.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I know this is a somewhat unique concept, but I'm just curious on the maintenance side of it. So I think as part of the conservation easement, if it's a diseased tree, you know, a tree with old dying, the city would come through, manage that, maybe remove it, cut it, maybe do some replanting. It's not a park, and, you know, all the neighbors contribute to purchasing and/or buying it from the city, however that financing works. But could people use that, or is it like completely private? Like, is it something that, you know, kids say, hey, let's go look for bugs, right? And they go in there, and they hang around, like, would the police show up and say, get out of here? Or, you know, how is the relationship between this space and residents and the community?
Yeah, it's city-owned property, and we do have a number of lots like this all around town. A lot of them were acquired through tax forfeiture, there might be wetlands, things like that. It's not that we're patrolling that, looking for that kind of thing, it would be enforced on a complaint basis. We have had issues on people encroaching into city property. They start taking down trees, putting in fire pits, encroaching on the city land. So that is something that we've had to deal with in other similar situations, but the intent is, yeah, whether kids are going to go in there and hike around, again, enforced on a complaint-type basis.
Sure. One last question, and this was kind of more on the easement, and I think you used a term, I forgot what you said. I don't think there's like any utilities, right, running between there, or is there? And what action is the city going to take to, I guess, clear it out, move it, dig it up? Can you just explain?
Can you just explain a little bit more?
Yeah, so it's an easement, that's the lightly red dashed lines. They're proposing to vacate that easement. That's an action that's done by the city council. So at the same time that they consider this plat, they'll be considering the vacation of that easement. And given the fact that there's no utilities or anything in there, it's no problem to vacate that. They will be establishing new easements similar to what's located here now along the newly established lot lines. So there would be 10-foot easements established as part of this plat in this location here.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. What happens after 99 years? So that's because it's a lease rather than... So they're not transferring the deed to the lot. It's a lease? So then who owns it after that?
The city would still own the property where the fee owner...
So is it the conservation easement that ends after 99 years and the city still has the property?
Correct.
That makes sense.
Could be a decision at that time whether they want to reestablish that easement. We do have a number of these across town. I'm not aware of any expiring within their lifespan, but I would imagine there are a few that may be coming up.
I think that's all, thank you.
For the record, the answer, so you can hear it on the microphone, is 99 years is the maximum legally established timeframe that can be put on a conservation easement like this.
Carrie, where are there other... You mentioned that there are similarly situated outlots that the city owns. Could you point us to any of those?
Not offhand. I know we have had requests to change the outlot status for construction of affordable housing. Those have typically been denied by the city council. I don't have those specific sites off the top of my head, but we...
But there are preservation outlots that, for a similar reason, that they have trees. Are they located adjacent to residential like this?
Usually they are in residential neighborhoods like this, yeah.
Is this the first time that we're creating the outlot by subdividing current, you know, zone-compliant lots? And I guess creating something that would not be, you know, code compliant if it were in R1, a regular R1 district or zone?
There was one somewhat similar situation. It was an existing lot. Their building was proposed on it and the neighbors got together and wanted to purchase the site on Oak Lane. And it was a similar circumstance where the city purchased it upfront and the residents pay the city back over time. That was about seven, eight years ago.
Okay, so I just, yeah, I was wondering if the city attorney had any hesitation in terms of the process of taking essentially a lot that meets, that is code compliant and turning it into one that's not? Now, I know an outlot's different and defined differently, but I wondered if that's why partially it got bounced back to the planning commission review?
Yeah, it's for the plat.
Right.
That comes back to the planning commission.
Is there anything about this lot currently that would make it, I mean, that we would consider it to be... I know you said there's steep grade, but is it unbuildable for any reason?
It was created within the subdivision of this block as a buildable lot. Let's see if we... Yeah, so you can see it was part of this subdivision along Highwood Drive. And it was developed as a, or created as a buildable lot. The property owner, and it was one of the later homes to be developed probably because of those slopes. But the property owner at 5229 purchased it and just held it for many, many, many years. But they've since sold both of those lots.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah, it would be, if someone wanted to build on that lot, it is buildable. However, those steep slopes would make it difficult. And we have ordinances about just how much disturbance can take place within those slope areas, so they would have to meet those. It would probably result in a relatively small building footprint.
Possibly a variance too. The, I just want to make sure I understand what we're decide, what we're responsible for deciding here. So it's a land use question on the outlot of whether we think that's an appropriate land use. And that's pretty much it, right?
Yeah, there's really not a lot of discretion here.
Right.
The two resulting lots get bigger and we're just establishing a lot that's not buildable.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I guess just one question I have. I mean, I definitely worry about precedent here and I know others have talked about it. So it seems like the only one similar is that one you mentioned, seven, eight years ago.
Yeah, you may have been planning... Remember, they were proposing a house to be built there, but it didn't have direct access to a public street. There was that long right-of-way that was going to take the access. So they needed a variance.
I just, something seems odd to me about this particular ask. And I'll save that for my comments, but... Any other questions? All right, thanks. Welcome the applicant or homeowner or whoever. Come forward if you have like a presentation and just want to stand for questions. I'm sure there are a few.
I'll stand for questions. Andrew Carter, 6012 Pine Grove Road. Like Carrie said, I've been in front of the city council twice, once back in May and then once about two months ago as well. It's been a process. It's taken quite a bit of time to get to this step. So we had another kind of, I guess, vote. It was a city council vote to keep this going a few months ago, which passed as well. So happy to give more details to the story or answer any questions that anybody has.
As I recall, somebody did buy the lot and attempted to build on it.
Yes.
So can you tell us a little bit of the history? And also why it's helping both your lot and your neighbor's lot? And reducing, just some of the history?
Absolutely. Yeah, so this really started about two years ago. And the trustee that was selling this lot along with other assets of this, the person to the left of this lot, originally sold it to a builder about three or four months after they listed it at a lower price. The builder came out, had the lot surveyed, and it turned out that there was really a small trapezoid that was buildable by city code. The back, or the setback in the lot was 110 feet, which put it way up the hill. If you look at the cul-de-sac here and the back of my lot, it's a 35-foot difference. And the maximum house height, I think, was 35 feet was allowed. So the builder, you know, was thinking, I'm going to have to cut into this hill, put up a 30-foot retaining wall in back, and the roof has to be the same level the top of the hill was. So it didn't work, really. So whether, yes, it's a buildable lot per se, but in reality, it's much more complex than that. So the builder backed out. About six months later, I acquired the lot, which was about a year, a little over a year ago. We originally came to the city council with a presentation, which I can distribute to anybody who needs it, but it aligned heavily with the sustainability plan for City of Edina. So we're talking, right, not another house here, so no additional impervious surfaces. There's about 2,500-plus-year-old oaks on the property, right? Which holds the hill together, really. So if you're talking about runoff, no more of that. We're right by Mirror Lake as well. So in terms of water quality, it helped that as well. So there was a sustainability piece that matched. And then my house, which is 6012, the southern lot here, again, it's five feet from the boundary. That house was built in 1928. So when the city divided up these lots in the late 70s, that was kind of how they put that line straight. So the bump out would actually get my lot back up to code with a proper setback. So that was the quick story of kind of how it all happened. If anybody has any questions on it, I can surely fill out more details there.
So you're purchasing a proportionate amount of this lot and your neighbors purchasing a proportionate amount and then the city's?
Yeah, I think the city is going to come up with about 48% of this lot. And then we redrew the lot lines really to make it a bit geometric, to make it look nice. And if you look at my neighbor's lot, the Bennetts here, to the northwest there, they're really taking the, I mean, very unbuildable piece of the lot, which is the steepest of hills. They also have, as Carrie mentioned, the previous owner of that house owned both lots. So they have a retaining wall and a fence that goes into this new lot. So their new lot line would be pushing outside of that as well. Thank you, Carrie.
Any other questions? As we'll think on it, maybe some might come up later.
No, it's different. And I guess, you know, I want to address Commissioner Day's comment on the kind of city buying the lot. Again, it's a financing in trade for a land gift is really what it is. So the city is giving us, they've, you know, they valued it at $150,000, which is below taxable value. They're getting paid interest on that loan as well and they're getting this land. So, right, they're getting all the money back plus interest plus this land gift as well.
Can you just make sure I understood what you just said? So the financing costs are going to be recovered in the assessments?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Exactly. And that's per, I think it's the standard interest assessment that the city does. And it's, yeah, it's seven different neighbors varying degrees of, I guess, payback in the taxes, but we've got all the signatures and that's ready to go.
Any questions? Might have some for you later, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a public hearing. So like before, I'll, in case you just tuned in, provide a number for you to call. Here we go. For those who might be tuning remotely to participate. So please call the following number. Should pop up on your screen too. And enter access code 2631-367-7745. Password is 5454. And then press star three on your keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, which is now. Does anyone happen to be in the queue right now? Okay. So we will turn it to those who might be in the room that would like to testify. Again, you have three minutes to do so. You can come up to either podium, state your full name, address, speak away.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Testman, I live at 5017 Yvonne Terrace, 30-year resident of Edina, and I also serve on the Energy and Environment Commission. And I try to stay up on issues happening in the city. It's tough, there's lots going on. April 16th of 2024 must have been a slow night because I happened to tune into the council meeting when this was on. And it certainly piqued my interest, you know, when you started getting into conservation easement issues. My first thought was like, well, why was the city even entertaining this to begin with? And my second thought was, well, why is it going right to council and bypassing the planning commission? So I did a little research on my own on the parcel and I think we've already talked about that. It's a little less than a half acre. It's an irregular lot and it is, we've already seen it backs up to many parcels. It is heavily wooded, but it is zoned, currently zoned as a residential lot. And as Mr. Carter already stated, he purchased the lot in October 16th for $300,000. And about six months later, he was trying to move this into an easement, which, you know, is what it is. I just found that interesting. The council was agreeable and directed the staff and city attorney to draft necessary documents subject to city council approval. I happened to be at the November 6th meeting and it went right to a resolution. And the resolution, I think, should be restated. It was number 2024-90, approving the acquisition of real property and dispersing the statutory requirement for review by the planning commission, vacant land agreement, purchase agreement, and resolution number 2024-9, adopting special agreements and conservation easement. It's kind of a mouthful. There was a lot there. The conversation with the council, I thought, was a little odd. You know, the tone of the meeting was like this had been in the works for like years, but in reality, it only really been in the works for about six months. As we've already discussed, the city agreed to pay the owner $150,000, but then it's going to be paid back over time. City's going to finance it. And then the neighbors, as we heard, are already agreeing to pay for it. I guess what I'm most concerned about... Well, I'll get to my concerns. But I certainly can see why the homeowner wants this. That lot was owned by a previous owner for a reason. Now, it was purchased in October of 20... What did I say? 20, it was purchased in October 16th, 2023. I'm sure it's, it was purchased to maintain that privacy, that protection. You know, there'll be advantages to the homeowners. What's this is in place, their land values will go down, their taxes will go down. And I thought it was odd that the city's going to agree to finance it upfront. So I guess my real question is, why is the city doing this? I'm a tree guy, I love trees, but we do have shortages of lots in the area. So I'm not sure why we would remove a conforming, buildable residential lot. I already see, is it, I'm over time?
Yeah, just wrap up your...
So that was one issue. Secondly, the city's going to purchase a quarter of an acre and the rest is going to be split to the neighbors. Councilmember Day already mentioned, we have no conservation easement standards. And I don't believe any other municipality would ever entertain an easement of a quarter of an acre. It seems to me like it's a one-off project to benefit a few folks in the neighborhood. We have a city budget that is already growing demonstrably now. And I think we're just burning unnecessary resources of the city in terms of staff time, replating costs, et cetera. So I guess I would question the validity of the project. I think the owners have options. I don't know why this existing lot before you have to replat everything just couldn't be dropped into a conservation easement through Minnesota Land Trust or another organization that handles these types of things, so.
Appreciate it, we just need to wrap up, sorry.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming in. Is anyone else here in person that'd like to testify? Oh, sorry to speed you up to just wait for no one. Do we have anyone else on the line?
No, we don't. Safe to proceed.
All right. A motion to close a public hearing.
Motion to close.
All those in favor? Oh, we need a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we've moved, public hearings closed. Take it back to the planning commission. Time to deliberate. Any comments, discussion, questions? Yeah, Commissioner Harmon.
I'm sympathetic that this seems like a weird sort of pet project. You know, I appreciate that, if I understood correctly, the slope slopes down towards the cul-de-sac. So preservation of those trees does prevent runoff into the city streets and public sewer system or whatnot. But it does seem like a weird little pet project that ultimately benefits surrounding neighbors, but that's not our purview. I mean, I think our purview is to look at the outlots and I don't see anything objectionable to what's being proposed. I can take it up with city council on my own time.
Other comments, questions? Yeah.
I do, we'll just go down the line.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I mean, for me, I think there's a few, I know... I don't know what kind of lot it is, but I know one between the group of houses on Maple Road and the 50th and France, the bank. You know, there's a little slice back there. I mean, so we've got some odd lots all over. What this does, I mean, your house was built in 1928. It was platted in, you know, 1970, 50 years later. This helps one house kind of achieve appropriate setbacks. The other house is going to take over the retaining wall. And so then it is literally just a... And so then it is literally just a bunch of trees. The homeowners are going to pay interest. The city is, is buying it, but the city will not lose money. And I don't think they're going to go in there and prune those trees. So I see it as kind of a win-win. And I, and I do understand and sympathetic to kind of losing a building lot, but we just, prior to this, allowed a house on two lots that was a more buildable lot than this. So I see this as really are just kind of cleaning this up. And it's just the plat approval, and I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Felton and Commissioner Honneman, and would just add that I'm not troubled at all by the idea that there might be one lot that's not able to be developed and built to its absolute maximum capacity. Where people, you know, like, the idea that there may be a single lot with some valuable trees on it that a person can't manipulate is like not offensive to me. And I, it's just like not an offensive concept. And I also don't think there's like a conspiracy going on or anything like that. So for all those reasons, this just doesn't feel offensive at all, and, and I would vote in favor.
All right. So I, you know, I don't think there's any conspiracy or anything offensive about this one either. You know, and I, I scoured the code, I spent quite a few hours going through our ordinances and trying to inform myself as much as I could about outlots and conservation easements in general. And, you know, I don't, from a procedural standpoint, from an ordinance standpoint, I don't have really any major hangups in terms of the land use and creation of an outlot based on how our city ordinances read today. What does make me a little uneasy, I guess, is just the concept, you know, creating conservation easement without any, any process existing in place in the city of Edina. And, you know, we said, it's not a very common thing that we stumble across, but usually I'd like to make an informed decision as a member of the Planning Commission on some set of criteria for establishing a conservation easement. You know, just like if we're establishing a PUD, what are the set of criteria that a PUD has to meet? So I'd like to know, what is the set of criteria that a conservation easement has to meet? Especially if one is going to be paid for with public money. Now, granted, it's going, I understand the tax assessment piece, but we still will be responsible for the maintenance of this. You know, and going through, I was trying to research what other cities had and everything. There isn't a whole lot out there, and perhaps there needs to be. And I think, honestly, I think the city, coming out of this discussion, needs to have a serious discussion about creating a set of standards for conservation easements. I did, I did find that several years ago, the Department of Natural Resources of the state of Minnesota did recommend to the state, did make serious recommendations to the state about conservation easements, specifically if they're purchased with public money. Two of those recommendations were, and I'll just read them quick. You know, that every entity acquiring conservation easements with public money has an established project selection process that includes necessary project criteria and a decision-making process to sort or rank the projects. And that a conservation easement being considered for acquisition with public monies, you know, must meet a minimum level of public benefit. We didn't really have a lot of discussion around that point because there, we don't have any guidelines here around that and around conservation easements. And again, I do think that needs to be established. So, you know, not having that process in place does make me uneasy, especially being an engineer. I just don't like having any direction here for, for that. So that's, that's my main hangup here. And honestly, you know, because, because of the fact that we don't have a set of criteria, and I think we do, and I think it needs, is very important going forward as far as sustainability goals for the city and how they conflict with potentially, in this case, maybe housing goals and whatnot, density goals. You know, I, I would, I'm probably going to be abstaining from this vote simply because I think from a procedural standpoint, there are things that we can do. We have less, very limited discretion, but I think we do need at least some sort of process for the conservation easement piece.
Yeah, I, I would agree with a lot of things I've heard so far. Try to put my random thoughts into something that's coherent, but I see this as two separate things. One is process and process slash financing, which I think we heard so far. And sometimes, you know, because we don't have established guidelines of what are the checklists that we need to go through. And then you hear that the city is financing it, and there's a financing mechanism that is outside of our control. We get a little bit nervous, right, and our ears perk up, be like, oh, what's going on? Like, how do we deal with this, right? So I think I would definitely agree with Commissioner Day that, you know, we, we come across unique situations like this. We, we say, hmm, there's a gap here in terms of a process. Maybe in a future work plan, it can be something that comes up. Or if we see more of these things coming up, you know, that's something we should touch on. And we had, you know, someone come up and give some testimony that, hey, you know, this, this didn't seem like it flowed properly, right? So I think that's all signs that establishing a process and a mechanism of dealing with this is important. So that's one side. The other side of it is when we balance things like sustainability goals, housing goals, et cetera, right? We certainly want to increase density in some areas of the city, right? And we want to think about housing, you know, there's a shortage of houses across the city. You've got to think about how do we use land appropriately in the right zoning to make sure that we're maximizing the usage. At the same time, we love sustainability, right? We love trees, we love nature, we love anything to do with sustainable goals, right? So we have to balance those two things together. This lot, right, it's, it's not in the heart of a residential area. Well, it kind of is, but it's on a hill that's hard to build on. There's a lot of building constraints that make this an easier thing to say yes to. There's mature trees on it that we want to preserve, right? So when you balance density, sustainability, all these kind of things, it seems like, yeah, this makes sense to conserve some of the land here for the future, right? And so I think from that perspective, you know, Commissioner Bornstein was like, nothing here is offensive to me. It's not offensive to me either, right? But I think going forward, having a process will be really important. So I'm in favor of this. I think it's a great spot, right? Kids could go look for bugs for ninety-eight years, probably, or ninety, ninety-nine year, who knows? But it's something that I think would preserve some of that green space within the city going forward. And I think that's important. But maybe a note to Chair Bennett is maybe a process in the future that we could think about. Like, what's the criteria? Maybe look at what other cities are doing. Because I'm guessing that this may not be the last time we're going to hear about a conservation easement popping up at some point in the city. So, thanks.
The public benefit seems clear. There's preserving some vital canopy for the city, which is important for our climate action plan. So that's all good. I think there's a valid question about whether it's in the best interest of the city to allow buildable lots to be taken off the market. But we literally do it all the time. And as Commissioner Felton mentioned as recently as ten minutes ago, I think it's pretty well-known in Edina that it's hard to subdivide but easy to combine. I think that's probably what most people would say about our practices for decades. So this, as a land use question, it seems most consistent for us to allow this. And I guess my, having thought about it, it is unusual, but having thought about it, why not? I mean, I have a real hard time figuring out a reason why we shouldn't approve this. Me and my two cents.
Before my comments, I just have a couple more questions about process. As, maybe for Carrie, as, as was mentioned by one of the person, the person who testified. You know, there's two meetings prior to this, kind of November and April. Is there much more you can share about that? And I mean, we're looking at a subdivision. Can you remind us just like of that process, when that typically happens compared to this? Why, why, this just feels very unique and odd. Why did it bypass us? Like, I don't, I don't, guess I have answers to that that I'm feeling good about?
Yeah, I, I think the applicant wanted some assurances that it would be approved. If he would have, if they would have started with the plat and rearranged all those lots. There's no, I don't believe he would even approach this subdivision without those assurances from the city council that they would be agreeable to this kind of arrangement. And so the mechanism to create that lot and everything that they agreed to, this is kind of that last step, is to create those lots, create the outlot.
And so that just helped me understand, is that, that's technically a subdivision, and that decision was already made, or is that part of what we're doing now? I, I'm just kind of lost here.
Yeah, it's the subdivision, they didn't approve the subdivision because that's a, statutorily, that's for your process. We have the, the code is pretty clear about establishing outlots. You have to replat the properties in order to establish it. One of the, one of the conditions of creating an outlot is that the area be conveyed or dedicated to the city or other public body.
Yeah.
So that's the justification here for the creation of the outlot.
And it's conveyed, even though the city is paying for it, it's still, I mean, it's technically conveyed to them. That's why it's number two on that checkbox. Yeah, any other, I mean, you guys are raising your hand.
Will there be any kind of signage or indication that this parcel is either city-owned? I mean, it's not a park, I get that, but it is part of a conservation easement. I just, to the passerby, is this going to just appear like part of the residences next door? Just wondering how the city approaches that.
Yeah, it would appear, as in that picture that I showed from the street, it would appear just like that.
Yeah, I guess my comments are short. I'm, I'm kind of more with Commissioner Day on this. I, I don't know if I'm going to abstain or vote to deny this. I, I think this process is just, it's not feeling good. And I, I think of similar situations where if this can create a precedent, why wouldn't it? I, I know of a near neighbor who has a pretty cool other property they own that they maintain and they keep wooded. But hey, it'd benefit them if the city could buy it from them so they don't have to deal with the tax or the maintenance. I, I just see like, I don't see much public benefit that couldn't already be happened with someone just owning a wooded property and owning that sustainability. I don't understand why the city should take that onus on and front that bill when it seems like, at least in this particular circumstance, the benefit is local to the specific spot. And I, I think, I, I know multiple people with multiple, they own a neighboring lot. It's just this one-off thing. I, I don't like that precedent at all, so I'm going to abstain or vote for denial. So it's as simple as that. Yep.
Just wanted to add, you know, I think that Mr. Testman, being a member of the Energy and Environment Commission, I would encourage you to bring this discussion back to the commission as well and make sure that that's good discussed there, so that we do maybe gain some traction for establishing a set of criteria for conservation easements, you know, in terms of minimum size, the quality of the natural features, the signage. You know, when I looked up conservation easements, I was like, I, I couldn't find anything this small. I, until Carrie mentioned that we have the one in the city. But most, most places, most, like the Minnesota Land Trust and stuff, they require a property to be at least forty acres or thirty, depending on the, how they, what they deem it to be. The Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program wants properties to be at least eight acres. So we need to have something, some kind of guidance here before this potentially becomes proliferates or becomes another issue.
To address that issue, as you know, we've got a huge task ahead of us to update the zoning ordinance. I think we can add this to the list as part of that. So I would say over the next year to two years, we can work on that as part of the zoning ordinance update.
Great.
And from what I'm understanding, this is a plat only?
This is a, yes, you're being asked to approve the plat.
And any other?
Recommend approval of the plat.
Okay. And Hennepin County will show this outlot as owned by the city of Edina?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, discussion, motions? Nothing important again?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Let's just do a roll call vote for this.
Commissioner Al Kier.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Abstain.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Aye.
Commissioner Felton.
Aye.
Commissioner Honneman.
Aye.
Chair Bennett.
Nay.
Motion, I guess the, it carries, so congratulations on the next steps, getting the plat. All right, that concludes our public hearing. And we move on to the reports and recommendations. We have two tonight. We have sketch plan for fifty-one hundred Eden Avenue. And then we have some advisory communication regarding parking. So start with Addison Lewis. Present a way, tell us what we're about to see.
All right, good evening, Chair Commissioners. The Opus Group has submitted a sketch plan proposal at fifty-one hundred Eden Avenue. And just for the, those in the audience and those watching at home, a sketch plan proposal is not a, a formal development application. It's an opportunity for a landowner or developer to propose an idea for a project and receive non-binding feedback from the Planning Commission and city council. No action is taken on a sketch plan, so the purpose of this is really just to have a discussion tonight and provide, provide direction that may inform a future land use application. Does this not work? All right, there we go. So as mentioned, the subject property is fifty-one hundred Eden Avenue. You may recall that this property received preliminary PUD approval in twenty twenty-three for a seven-story, one-hundred-and-thirty-six-unit apartment building with ground floor commercial. That project has not moved forward, but the new proposal is to construct a five-story, one-hundred-and-twelve-story square foot office building that would potentially include commercial or retail on the ground floor. Opus has indicated that they would occupy a portion of the building and that this would, that they would move their corporate headquarters to this location from Minnetonka. The proposal would involve removal of the existing four-story office building that was constructed in nineteen sixty-eight. That building is approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet, so it's about one-third of the floor area of the proposed building. So here are some photos of the site as it is today. Here's from the other side along Eden Avenue. The current zoning on the site is planned office district one. The applicants have proposed a rezoning to PCD two, which, as you can see, is how a lot of the district is currently zoned today. There's a couple other POD zone parcels in the area. The Public Works parcel, or the, the former Public Works site, which is directly across the street on Arcadia, is zoned planned industrial. But that is likely not to be the long-term use of that site. That site, you may recall, received preliminary approval for a senior co-op housing plus a restaurant and public park. That project also has not moved forward, but it's likely to be something closer to that in the future. So a rezoning would be required for the subject property to allow for the possibility of some kind of ground floor, commercial or retail use to occupy the ground floor. That would not be allowed under the, the POD zoning. Here is a look at all of the, all of the permitted uses within the planned office district. You can see it's not very extensive. It's essentially offices, post offices. You can have like athletic gyms, daycare schools, breweries, things like breweries, taprooms. Those are only allowed in POD, POD two districts. So that would not be an option here. The site is guided mixed-use center on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The Grand View District and Fiftieth and France are the only two areas in the city that have this designation. These are areas, these areas are mixed-use districts that are intended to serve more than just the surrounding neighborhood and are envisioned for roughly a fifty-fifty split of residential and commercial uses. In twenty twelve, the city completed the Grand View District Development Framework. And in terms of And in terms of land use, that plan states that, the plan emphasizes a mixed-use subarea between Vernon, Eden, Highway 100, and the rail corridor. So that's this, this area here in the orange that's identified as mixed-use center. It says, "Arcadia is seen as a more residential street with a range of condo apartments and multi-level townhouse types. Mixed use and office buildings are anticipated and may be oriented to Vernon and/or south towards Eden and Our Lady of Grace Fields." So here's just another rendering from that plan. And so what's depicted here is, here's the, the site with two to three-story townhomes along Eden with, you know, taller, more, more building massing, either multifamily or offices oriented more towards the highway. And then in 2016, the city completed the Grand View District Transportation Study, and that plan envisioned a new frontage road along the east side of this property. Just in talking to our city engineer, it doesn't sound like that's likely to happen anytime in the near future, but it's just something for you to be, be aware of. So here is a look at what is being proposed. Again, it's a five-story office building, about 112,000 square feet. Here is a look at their site plan, showing the first floor uses. You can see they're showing some type of active use on the corner. It's yet to be kind of determined exactly what that would be. There is an outdoor terrace for that space shown here. Most of the ground level would be devoted to vehicle parking. There would be vehicular access off of Arcadia and Eden, just as there is today. They've indicated that the Eden access would be the one for service and trash vehicles, accessing, accessing the trash and kind of the utility area here. The site plan shows 10-foot sidewalks around the site. The sidewalks are currently eight feet along Eden and then eight on Arcadia tapering down to six. And then they're also showing a bike storage room here as well. This is just another version of their site plan here that shows the approximate setbacks. So we're at about 20 feet from the edge of the building here to the property line along Arcadia. We're about six feet from the north property line here, about 15 and a half feet from this east property line, and then about three feet here at this corner down along Eden and about 18 feet, a little more, over at this corner here. I also just wanted to note that along the Eden side, we have about 30 feet from the property line to the curb. It's a bit of a different story along Arcadia. There's only about five feet from the property line to the curb here. And in fact, we only have about 40 feet of, of right away from property line to property line on this side. So here are, there will be two, two levels of below-grade parking. The, the plan in total shows about 300 stalls, which should comply with the ordinance. They've indicated that they intend to meet the city's parking requirements. Here's a look at the upper-story floor plans. So the second level here on the left shows an amenity area with an outdoor terrace facing The fourth and fifth story floor plans here. So given the proposed sketch plan, it appears that this request would require rezoning from the planned office district to either PCD two or PUD to allow for the ground floor commercial. And then either variances or flexibility through a PUD would be required from building height, floor area ratio, and building and parking setbacks. It would also require a replat to combine all seven parcels that are currently on the site into one, and then it would also require going through site plan review. So once we receive the final plans, it's possible that additional variances are required, but this is just based on the information that's been presented here today. We believe that these would be the, the requests. So tonight, the Planning Commission should provide feedback on the appropriateness of the rezoning as well as the proposed variances. And just as you think about that, keep in mind, you know, our pyramid of discretion with a rezoning, the city is acting in a legislative capacity. We have a lot more discretion here with any variances. We're acting in a quasi-judicial fashion and have some, but less discretion than we do with a rezoning. This is the compliance table that was included in the staff report, so gave you the standards for the current zoning under the planned office district, the, the standards for the proposed zoning, PCD two. This is what was approved with the previous PUD from 2023 for the, the 136-unit apartment building, and then this is what's being proposed. So again, here, flexibility would be needed from the setbacks, building height, and floor area ratio, other things like the first floor building height, the building materials, first floor transparency. We'll have to look at those once the final plans would come in. And then here are just some other developments in the Grand View District that have either been completed or approved recently and that have either the same height or more height as well as floor area ratio to the proposed project. And then also just wanted to note that this site is within a quarter mile of Metro Transit Bus Route 46, which provides connections to other important regional transit routes, including the future E-line on France, the Orange Line BRT, the D-line BRT, and the Blue Line LRT. So with that, be happy to take any questions, and then the applicant team is, is here as
Thank you, Addison. Any questions, fellow commissioners for Addison? Come on, there's got to be one. Commissioner Smith, all right.
Thank you, Addison, for doing the presentation. So if I understand this correctly, if we want any kind of retail mixed-use, really POD one wouldn't work for us, right?
Yep, that's correct.
So we're looking at PCD two or PUD. PUD would give us maximum flexibility, right, in terms of what we want to put in place? If we do a PCD two, that gives us retail, that gives us some options, but then it's going to be a lot of variances that we have to approve as well.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just clarify too, you know, the decision of what to request is ultimately up to the applicant. They've indicated that it's their preference that it be rezoned to PCD two. So you should consider that, you know, the appropriateness of a rezoning to PCD two, but also, you know, consider, considering the variance criteria, provide feedback on, you know, how you would feel about those proposed variances. I included this just knowing that the city has historically used the PUD to, you know, move projects forward that achieve other benefits of the comprehensive plan. Because, you know, the, the variance, if, if we do the rezoning to PCD two, the variances will need to, you know, be justified and meet that criteria, and it'll be on the applicant to, you know, demonstrate that that criteria is met. But it is ultimately their decision of, of which, you know, direction to kind of go here, but I thought you could kind of provide feedback on, on both.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Honneman.
I, I have two questions. Is the current building compliant from a setback perspective for its zoning? Is it really 75 feet all the way around?
No, it is not.
Okay, I didn't think it was. And then the second question.
So I don't think the existing building, that's the building height. I don't think that building is 75 feet high, so it'd be less than that, but I, I guess I don't know if it meets all, if it's compliant for setbacks or not.
My understanding is that this year, I guess 2025 now, there's a major road construction project anticipated on 50th over Highway 100, and then the following year over Benton over Highway 100. And this past summer, we had the joy of, right, was this past summer where those roundabouts went in currently? I guess, does city council, when thinking about projects, aim to time them at all with major roadworks projects?
I would say no. I mean, these are private property owner, you know, projects that they're pursuing. I don't really think we can require property owners kind of, you know, abide by our timelines too for our street projects. We certainly try to coordinate and work together to mitigate those impacts, but I don't think, I don't know that that's ever been a factor in a, in a land use decision.
Okay. And then my last question is the, I'm sorry, it's called the design, District Development Framework. Is that similar with a different name to a small area plan? I mean, it has the same sort of weight and input from citizens and Planning Commission, and I mean, it sort of went through a similar process, just has a different name?
Yes.
Any other questions for Addison?
Not to put too fine a point on it, but is it, isn't it the case that this particular framework was not adopted by the city council?
It wasn't adopted as an official small area plan. When we updated the last comprehensive plan, I guess it was five years ago, at that time, you know, we were doing the small area plans for the different areas, and we had suggested actually taking this document and turning it into a formal small area plan, but the council decided not to, just because we've got this development framework, we've got the transportation study that was done, that they can still be guiding documents for development within this area, but they're not fully recognized small area plans. It's included in the comprehensive plan just as an attachment.
Okay.
Any other questions for Addison? I just got one, and maybe the applicant can fill it in two, but just kind of any distinguishing noteworthy features between the two proposals, the one previous to this and this one, just like, I mean, I can see them, but maybe for people who are tuning in, just of like access points, height, you know, what are, what, what did staff see as kind of biggest differences?
Well, I guess just in terms of, as you think about the variances, not that this is like, you know, the only thing to consider, but it's certainly a much smaller building. I mean, it's, you know, they would need a height variance, but it's not as tall as what, you know, we had previously approved. It needs a variance from the floor area ratio, but it's almost half of the floor area ratio of the previous building. So that kind of stuck out, I think, to me.
All right, that's all I had. Guess we'd welcome the applicant team forward. Please introduce yourselves. Thank you for coming here. Thanks for proposing yet again. Not so often we see the same group proposing something quite a bit different, so it'd be nice to hear the story behind that and just story behind you guys and why this makes sense to you now.
Great, thanks. Good evening, Chair Bennett, Commissioners. My name's Nick Moran with Opus Development, and it's great to be in front of all of you again with a little different proposal on a site that we're all very familiar with. We've got a team here, our team from ESG as well, Matt Axman and Bob Loken, so we're excited to get your feedback, get your input, and answer any questions you have. Again, a site we're very familiar with, as you all know, that we originally had pursued multifamily market rate apartments on the site. That was something that I think we approved end of 2023, and candidly, the, the headwinds that we saw in the capital markets with interest rates and kind of everything happening in the economy, we put that on hold and started exploring what other uses we might look at there. I may blame some of the construction in the area of driving by the building every day on my way home, that I couldn't get it out of my mind. So we started looking at what else could work here. And ultimately, at the same time, Opus was coming up on our current lease over in Minnetonka and starting to explore where our new office building, our headquarters, would be, and really just kind of knew that the majority of our, being in Minnetonka, a lot of our employees are on the west side of town. We've got a lot of history in the Grand View area in the past, developing in the area, and it was always a site that we really liked, and we thought, you know, as we looked at office, certainly some, you've seen the headlines, some office buildings have some challenges today, but we've seen in submarkets, specifically highly desirable markets like Edina, that buildings have done well and there's a high demand. So we ultimately made a shift and started looking at how we could look at an office building on the site. As you know, it's a challenging site. It's a smaller site, it's a, it's an odd shape. For those who were on Planning Commission when we went through the apartment proposal, we had a couple iterations and kind of tried to figure out, how could we get this to work and not feel like it's too imposing, but also fit the, the neighborhood and really work with the, the framework that all of you have laid out. So I think with that, I can turn it over to Matt and Bob. They're just going to articulate a few things in addition to what Addison presented, and then any feedback, input, and questions we're, we're here to answer. So thank you again.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'll kick us off a little bit and tell you why we are excited about this new use. There was a little talk about the Grand View District and its applicability. There's also, the, the staff report talks a lot about the comp plan and those goals. We think that pivoting this from residential to office use makes a lot of sense and meets a lot of those goals. The plan is for this to be a mixed-use district and for it to be walkable. And we think that this site is really well-suited to office. The adjacency to Highway 100 gives it great visibility, which is of more value to, to office tenants and, and office users than it is to residents. We also think the proximity to 100 and the noise and air quality issues there might make it better suited to office, where typically there are non-operable windows and, and, and sort of noise and air quality are less, less of an issue. And then finally, you know, bringing a bunch of employees here during the daytime is a great way to, to, to rejuvenate a mixed-use district. You have all those daytime users who can then patronize local businesses and make restaurants and businesses more, more economically viable if they've got patrons at, at all hours of the day. So I'm going to pass it over to Matt, who is our lead designer and is going to, and is really chomping at the bit to make this look a lot more compelling than this white box mass, and he'll, he'll talk a little bit about, more about some of the features.
Thank you, Commission. Yeah, I, I think, you know, at this stage, the things that we can start to talk about really are just general building organization and kind of a little bit different than maybe what you saw in some of those previous kind of sketch versions, our, our kind of primary design considerations at this stage really start with sustainability and building orientation related to sustainability. So as we all kind of know, a, a building oriented east-west is generally going to be a more sustainable structure from the get-go, knowing that, that hot western sun you get during the summer is limited to a smaller square footage on a western facade when it's, it's the, the smaller side of the building. So, you know, during the summer, you're not using as much of your HVAC needs as otherwise if that was a much larger facade. And additionally, during the winter, you're going to gain that solar heat gain from the south when the sun is much lower. So from a solar and sustainable perspective, that's kind of what drove the initial concept of orienting the building east-west. And then additionally, creating active uses at both Arcadia and Eden. So with the building lobby and the commercial space kind of jutting out and, and kind of reaching out to that corner towards the, the roundabout there, that's also where we have primary, our primary open space as located at B. The ideal kind of end condition there would be in lieu of what is today a five-foot retaining wall, as you sort of traverse across that sidewalk, would be instead something that you're able to engage with and walk up a, a sort of series of cascading landscaped elements into this pocket park space. So those are the things we're, we're excited about as the, as the design kind of progresses out of the, the white box stage. And happy day, answer any questions, and I'm excited to hear some feedback.
Thank you. All right, question time. Who wants to go? All right, Commissioner Alkire.
I'll start with the one that just jumped out at me. Why is it five stories? And when I, when I ask that question, I don't mean it should be shorter. I mean, why isn't it seven?
Yeah, it's a good question. We're primarily driven by parking, so we, we are trying to park this at a market, marketability for the office space, and we're very restricted in what we can do with parking on site. So we went down two floors, which gets us, I think we get to about 240 below, 230 below, and then some parking that you see at grade. At the end of the day, we, we, we need space that we can lease, and the parking will be required. So that's, that's driving a lot of the building height.
Add to that quick. If you look at the compliance table, too, the previous proposal, even though it was a bigger building, only required 165 stalls. This one would be around 300. So part of it is just, you know, our parking requirements require additional parking.
So what's driving that? Is it the code or is it the financing? I know financing sometimes asks for particular levels of parking, or is it that you really think that the facility needs it?
Yeah, the office demand, the lowest that we've really seen acceptable to tenants is three per thousand, give or take, in the market today. So we're trying to maintain that as close as we can. If we go any lower than that, we're going to have to find parking elsewhere. There is a ramp across from the Public Works site, but not having parking on site is a pretty fatal flaw when you're in the leasing portion of the project.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Feld.
Okay.
I have other questions, but I just wanted to ask a follow-up to the parking question. You know, Edina's a first ring suburb. And so those parking requirements are across the board?
Yeah, we see even higher. And as you get further out, we've seen four per thousand. Four and higher was kind of standard for a while, I think. That's starting to morph. You're seeing less, you know, every year. It's going lower, I would say, slowly, but we're still seeing that what I would call office market rate is three per thousand.
Even this close in?
Unfortunately, this close in.
You live within a mile of this?
I do.
Would you ride your bike?
For a month or two, yeah, I think I would. Tonight, I don't think I would have.
Not tonight.
Yeah, yes, yes, I would, yes. Which is why we're excited to further explore the bike room and having bike parking and really making it a very pedestrian-friendly experience, so that folks who do live nearby can walk or bike when possible. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're seeing patterns have changed with office. It's not what it used to be. It's not everybody coming and going at the exact same time. So there could be some flexibility there, but it feels like 300 is kind of the minimum that we have to hit.
Okay. And maybe, right, so I appreciate the, I mean, I can tell there's a lot of work, the whole kind of parking and how to get that down there and all the math involved and the orientation. So I appreciate the sparseness because it kind of keeps some of this clean. But at the same time, that sparseness is, you know, what I'm looking at in both the kind of shape and the orientation is what feels more like an office park building to me. So, and I know you're good. I've seen some of your other work, and you came through before on this. But, you know, the site, once again, you can see City Hall, the Public Works is right across the street. This is on 100. It is kind of the south gateway into Grand View. So I'm kind of hoping for some information here about what's going to make this appropriate for this site.
Sure, and I'll let ESG weigh in on that a little bit. But I do want to just mention, this is, we recognize that this is a very important, prominent corner. This is going to be a Class A, highly amenitized, multi-tenant office building, again, where our headquarters are going to be, which is very important to us, as well as, of course, to the city and the neighborhood. So somebody on either Planning Commission or City Council used the word jewel box of Grand View last time we were going through the apartment process, and we haven't forgotten that. It's important. So I know that the ESG team is wishing that we had better imaging for you so that you could see kind of what they're thinking about, but I'll let them weigh in a bit as well.
Yeah, so in general, the way we're going to avoid the office park, kind of typical typology that you're kind of used to seeing is really the idea is to focus our fenestration to a much more human scale. So think of it a little bit more akin to some of the more modern curtain wall buildings you're used to seeing. It's not going to be your classic ribbon window with, you know, five-foot-thick spandrel going across. It's really not the direction that we're going and the direction that Opus wants to take this. So we are going to be flexing our design skills here to make this a really special, articulated building.
And then, you know, you were talking about, do more things, you're talking about activating that corner and, right, you've got office retail. I think that's important, more retail, more, you know, because office, you go and you work at your office and you come and go in your car. It'd be great if you're coming and going on your bike or some other thing, right, to make it more pedestrian. So but seeing people kind of go in and out that corner, what are you thinking about that?
From a, from a use standpoint, we're calling it commercial today. I think we certainly are going to explore all the different uses for that space, but we certainly agree. We want that activity there. Matt touched on the open space, similar to what we had in the last proposal, but I think even larger is this idea of a public pocket park that kind of interacts with the building on that corner and really makes that corner kind of come to life where today, you know, you've got a five-foot retaining wall with a rail over top of it. Again, we're calling it commercial today. We're very hopeful that those conversations progress, and we do have a very active use there.
And then on the same, that corner, you've got the wide sidewalk, and I appreciate wide sidewalks, right, having a couple of parties like go by each other with strollers, right, like 12 feet or whatever. And then the other thing about that is your property line is set back fairly far. You can bring that sidewalk kind of up. And because of that grade change and the pocket park, I mean, one could go down and be able to cross the street, but another part of the sidewalk can come up against the property line. Because the more there's kind of green space between the sidewalk and the street, the more comfortable people are going to feel, because that is kind of a, you know, because the whole south is open and fairly exposed. So if you could make it kind of nice for pedestrians on the corner, I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely. It's good feedback.
I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Most questions I had have been answered. I guess really I'm now at the comment stage. Two things would be just PUD, if we decide to go that route. I feel like I mentioned this the last time. He goes in front of us and probably have done it multiple times. But it's always great to see, you know, we have a set of requirements for PUD that's spelled out in our zoning code, Section 36-253. And there's all the different criteria addressing, you know, how your building meets those set of criteria. It's always good to just have directly spelled on the packet, especially for residents and stuff, if they do venture, look at that. And it really just helps with the conversation right away. And the other piece would just be, you know, around, I'm really curious to see how the traffic study and stuff shakes out for this one. You know, we debate the utility of traffic studies when we have discussions about sites in general, but I know that that area can be kind of a nightmare to give at different times of day. So with, you know, 300 different parking stalls and a busy office building, I'm just be anxious to see what that looks like. And I hope that that's highlighted and could help alleviate any fears we have about what impact that may have on that corner. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, as I was going through all the material, activation was the key word for me. How do we bring more life, more energy into this part of the city? You know, you're coming up Highway 100, you see the Opus sign. It's like an entryway. Folks get excited. I take this route quite often. And as new development starts popping up on the west side, you know, we want people to maybe come into, you know, ground-level active use, Section C, coffee shop, maybe a couple of things in there that'll be great to walk to. I know in the previous PUD that we talked about, this was a question, and I wish Lou was here, because he would have been going bonkers on this one. But having folks be able to access that space as mixed use is going to be really important. To the parking question, right, what does that look like with the vehicular access point A? Certain points of the day, with residents trying to access Highway 100, it gets kind of busy. Cars are trying to figure out who's going to go first and this kind of stuff. And so just what is that parking and that driving vehicular traffic is going to look like would be really important. But overall, bringing, you know, your firm to the city as a headquarters, we love that. Activating this area, making it exciting to visit and check out, we love that. And the building design I know is still in the works, and I know you do a good job kind of designing it. And this one thing was kind of bugging me, but I don't know if you guys noticed, but sunlight sometimes on France Avenue, there's a building at the end, all the way down to the end, like by Highway 494. The sun hits that building and it reflects all the way up France, and it blinds people when you're driving down France. I know with the sudden exposure, as the sun is setting in the wintertime, I don't know if that's going to have an issue reflecting it onto Highway 100. So I'm sure as you're doing your design work, you kind of figure out, you know, the reflection, if it's a huge glass facade facing the highway, the last thing that we want is drivers kind of like flipping down their thing or trying to see where they're going. Just something to think about, and I know it's kind of quirky, but I've seen it happen a lot of times. But overall, I like where this is going. Activation is the key. And I think if we could focus on that, this would be a very, very positive site.
Thank you.
I have a few more. Can we go back to the image of the building? Yeah. I just want to follow up on what Commissioner Smith was talking about, activation. So I'm imagining myself walking along Arcadia. See, all the people here are to the west, and the cars are to the right. And the way it looks to me so far is that the activation is not where the people want to be. So if I'm walking up Arcadia, the wall to my right appears to have no entry points, and it appears to be a blank wall.
Yeah, that's a blocking diagram. I'm wondering if this could be a little more helpful in that what you see here is, so this facade, this is where the commercial space would be. So this would be, you know, 75% or more transparency. And then there's actually a little, I guess I'd call it a covered walkway. And then there would be a office building entry here, in addition to kind of a drop-off area here. And then the idea with the commercial space is we're exploring the different uses. There's a project in St. Louis Park, the Bridgewater Bank Building, that has hazelwood in it, and you go into their lobby to go into the restaurant. It would probably be a similar entry here with also an exterior entry. So trying to kind of create that energy in the lobby of the commercial space as well as the office space. So apologies, we recognize this is a very crude, if you will, blocking diagram, but there would be a significant amount of architecture with windows, setbacks, pedestrian walkways, covered walkways, all sorts of stuff. And then there's also obviously the vehicular access as well at the far northwest corner.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. So go ahead.
Yeah, maybe to add on to that, one of the challenges for activating Arcadia, and we're up for the challenge, is there's a tremendous amount of grade change along Arcadia. You know, if it were a flat street, you could be able to pop doors wherever you want. But here, we're having to negotiate that grade change. So that's the challenge, is we are all about activating Arcadia and making this enticing and exciting. Our challenge will be making it inviting and convenient to enter despite that grade change.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. So you would imagine that on that west facing, there would be a couple of pedestrian entries for various things?
Yeah, so if you can imagine, probably just kind of plan down from the A- marking there, it would likely be some porosity and ability to go east into the building, whether it's into that covered kind of porch space or within the building proper. But then additionally, right as you kind of get to the crest of where that thing starts to bend down by between C and E, we imagine that's going to be a potential access point. Like Commissioner Feld was talking about, multiple pathways through the site, is we're going to try to get one of those ones pushed as far north as possible, so that you can really have kind of almost a, if you did a study to watch somebody, kind of what's the path of least resistance, so to speak, so they kind of cut across it, and then there's multiple points of entry.
That's great. That's really important to me. And so you would imagine that whatever the retail business is on the first floor, whether it's a store or a restaurant, or have you, do you care?
You know, ideally, I think a restaurant would be great.
Okay, so there'd be a sign?
Yeah, we have to see how the market dictates. And as Bob mentioned, you know, our grade change from the upper vehicular access down to the pocket park, I think, is 18 feet, give or take, 16. So, you know, you won't have, obviously, doorways on Arcadia, but that's the idea of looking at this covered walkway and trying to maintain that grade so that you have that access and have kind of a pedestrian experience that doesn't require them to walk all the way to the far side of the site to access.
Okay. For feedback, my feedback on that would be, it's really important to have the building be engaging from the west, because one of the things that I'm excited about with this project is that I feel like it's going to help us build this area and help us solve the problem of the public works site across the street. And it could give us some positive momentum in the area. It'd really help make the whole be greater than the sum of the parts. Since you just mentioned the pocket park, when you say pocket park, what do you mean? Is there benches and places for, is it a, is it green space, or is it a place for people to gather?
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both. And we kind of went through this on the residential as well, and trying to program it and see what worked best for the neighborhood. But I think, again, given some of those grade changes, you may have a tiered park, you know, maybe there's some benches, maybe there's some, maybe we play with that grade a little bit to kind of create a three-dimensional, if you will, pocket park. But the idea is it's an open green space, but probably some programming to it as far as, you know, areas to sit. You know, we're really open to any and all ideas, and that's where, you know, ESG will help us kind of think about, you know, what we've seen in other areas, other cities, other parts of Edina, other municipalities that have done it well, where it really incorporates and feels inviting and brings people in.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the right direction. And once you start getting more detail about the entry and how the first floor is really going to be organized, you'll have a better sense of what could work where. But, I mean, in Edina, we have plenty of green places to look at, but we don't have places to gather necessarily, and that would be really valuable. A few other things. So it's a lot of parking spaces, and it's an office building. So nights and weekends, there'd be a lot of parking spaces just sitting there doing nothing. So is there a way that we could have it be available for public use off-hours?
You know, I think that for the commercial space, the idea has always been that they would have more parking stalls at night, given that a lot of the office, a lot of the office would not, the office, cars would not be there. So you actually gain some parking. The intent is for the below-grade parking to be private for the office. We have not explored public. If we were asking for TIF, candidly, we would. We would look at how we could make that a public garage. We've heard that the district has quite a bit of parking in the garage behind the Public Works site, obviously. Obviously, the site, as it gets developed, across the street. And I know Hilltop is short on parking as well. So there could be, you know, an agreement maybe in that regard, where we talk to some private owners who have a need, but we have not looked at public parking.
Okay. A few minutes ago, I think it was Commissioner Day brought up traffic on Arcadia. And I think that's a problem, too, but that's not, I mean, there's traffic today, kind of a mess traffic today on Arcadia before you even come to town. So I don't necessarily view that as your problem, but I think one thing that we should be talking about as a city, as we proceed in this direction, is maybe Arcadia should be no parking, just because it's a mess. And we have, as you just mentioned, really excellent district parking in this area. You're going to add 300 spaces for your building. I don't, it's inconceivable why we make this investment in district parking and then allow people to park on the street where it makes a mess. You can park on the street if it didn't make a mess, but in this case, it does. So that's just something, not your problem, but something that we can continue to talk about in the future. Let me just make sure. Oh, I was really happy to see that you maintained some of the stilt look on the southeast. Oh, I was really happy to see that you maintained some of the stilt look on the southeast corner. That was nice. Kind of, kind of like, uh, recognition of the past heritage of the site. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, the updated traffic study is underway, just as an FYI for the new use. And a big part of why we do have the two access points is, is for those reasons that you've all stated is, is we think it's important to have two spots specifically for, uh, you know, loading and trash off of Eden and then obviously the main entrance off of Arcadia.
I'm a little bit torn about this one and it's sort of my thought about small area plans or frameworks in general is that you, you map out great visions of possibility, but we, the citizens and council, and we don't own those properties, we don't know when they'll turn our hands, we don't, you know, have control of the development timeline. Um, I think it's a perfectly nice office building. I do actually like the nod to the, with the pylons to the old sort of building on stilts. I'd love to hear you say that you were gonna do some major earthwork to make what's identified as be, uh, more level so that it's accessible from the sidewalk. I, I think honestly, this, you know, roundabouts aren't particularly pedestrian friendly, so we've kind of created the pedestrian attraction right next to a place that's very unattractive and not safe. And I question that positioning and if that's the right place to put it versus pulling the building further south, I guess, and putting, um, yes, think, and putting, you know, the pocket park or the green space in a more protected area. I wasn't quite clear what you were saying on the two different entrances.
Uh, two different vehicular access points. So currently we have the access point here off of Arcadia. This would be the main vehicular access point, so vehicles would come in, uh, through here for parking. We also maintain a curb cut on Eden as well, both of which exist today.
They do both exist. I mean, I guess I'd, I'd be curious from a, a traffic flow pattern, do we need two access? I mean, every vehicular access across the sidewalk is another opportunity for, um, an incident with a pedestrian. To me, the, the mixed use is really important here, that activation is really important. Um, but I'm sort of holding my breath a little bit to give you a chance to fully develop it because it does feel perfectly fine, but not inspired the way that I think those Grandview district frameworks were and the way that the whole area could be if it, you know, had the will behind it. So, um, for me, that would be really important is that mixed use, the activation and then, you know, working with the city or other business owners on the parking piece. I mean, I certainly, I'm, I, I don't hate TIF as much as some folks, but to me, there is real value in partnerships and uses of parking that benefit everyone and having three hundred stalls sit empty, um, on nights and weekends seems like a, a waste of what could be a much more inspired, would you call it jewel box of the area.
I mean, everybody said everything, but I agree that the office use is, may make sense here and it's, it's a good mix to add in. I think the variances could be reasonable, you know, just depending, just thinking about those and, and how much they deviate from what would be required. Um, I agree with everything everyone said about it may turn on how well Arcadia can be activated, like how much of that can be activated and what that might look like to a person. Um, and also just that, I mean, like, looks like a flat, like a, it's like a flat wide box, isn't it? Right now, I mean, that's, I know, and I know you've talked about it, but like, how does it not look like that? You know, does, does this, just even just setting aside like the human scale activation and what, what it, how a person might be able to interact with it along Arcadia, just like stepping back and seeing it, you know, as you're driving by one hundred and you guys are gonna maybe be in there as the tenant. What, what, what kind of architecture do you envision, just like the structure as a whole having? Cause the, cause a box would maybe fit better, like, I don't know. This is very close in, this is like not suburban in, in a location. So what kind of architect, it's more just a question. I know you're thinking about this and like this is not the rendering, but how does it look?
Yeah, it's, it's tough to present a, a massing box and tell, and, and, and tell a, a group of planning commissioners, trust us, it's gonna be beautiful. Um, but, um, for instance, the, the, the height and the floor plate size and the overall volume of this is very similar to seventy-two fifty France, the, also known as the Craftsman. Um, I'm not suggesting that this is going to look like the Craftsman, but I think, but I think I can say that the Craftsman is an appealing looking building and it doesn't look like a office park. So there's, there's potential. This is, this is a canvas that, that is not limiting in that regard.
Yeah, I mean, you can imagine people would be like, wow, the Opus building is really cool looking.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we should hire them to build our next building. Yep, that's the, that's the idea.
Sure, yeah, or like maybe what firm designed it?
Precisely.
And just to kind of add, you know, obviously an aerial view is sometimes a little deceiving when it comes to like mass and scale and how this is perceived, both from highway or pedestrian. But the, the topography and the sixteen feet of grade change actually really makes this kind of dynamic in the way you view the building because in some, you know, we've been looking at this for, for a number of weeks now and it almost feels like specifically that portion of C kind of feels like this dock sort of like sticking out and then it kind of drops off like, like you'd see a, a Minnesota lake. So it's, it's a really interesting way to perceive, um, the building that's just not there today. So I think once you see specifically some pedestrian level views, you'll, you'll understand that the topography plays into kind of the, the general architectural motif.
Great, no, but thanks for being creative and, and working to put something active here.
Just a question, this is highly hypothetical, but let's just say, um, the lot went, I don't know, what would it be, thirty feet to the north, but say it was to the other side of that frontage road. Would you make the building bigger or because of parking you'd be constrained and would you move it to the north? Or would you move it to the north?
Uh, it's a good question. Uh, this came up in our multi-family proposal and, uh, it was shared with us that even if that land was forfeited, which it could be, that it would have to be for a public benefit and would not be, it would be for the city's benefit, not for private development. But hypothetical, if we were able to absorb that land, we would have a larger building, we'd have a bigger footprint and we'd have more room to work with.
Got one more question. All right. I got a few. Well, this is exciting. First off, thank you guys again for coming back. There's just been a lot of stuff sitting, you know, and there's been some good plans we've seen, like the previous one was exciting. And then when that turned into nothing, it was less exciting. So to see something come back, this is, this is what we want to start seeing just around town anyways. Uh, first off, just in ideal order of process, none of us benefit from the public work site, like having come to fruition already, which was kind of the point of the Grandview development framework is like that was going to be the catalyst that then drives all this other redevelopment and really helps define it. So unfortunately, it's just guesswork of how do you best interface with something that's not there yet? And I think through your tweaks on the last proposal, you made it better and I, I trust that you'll make this one better. But I think that other one was slightly better than from what I'm seeing now, just of how again, it was faced more toward Arcadia. But again, it's, we put a lot of onus on Opus and others to kind of figure that out. And I, I think you guys, just in general with the shape, configuration, the style, you're doing a pretty dang good job to help try to set a good tone for across the street. That's what you guys did with the previous proposal. So I, I expect to see this, but even better refined come formal proposal. Other part of the process, Commissioner Borenstein touched on it, uh, PCD two, I really support going that direction over a PUD. I think we've been doing too much PUD where we could just get creative with variances that are modest. And I think these ones, when you look at the practical difficulties to do what you want to do on a unique lot are well warranted. So, um, one of the, one of the pieces, oh, sorry, and then, uh, is also discuss the use. So I think a lot of people around town are just, I guess tired of seeing more and more residential going up. I think for a lot of reasons, they make sense where they're going up and what you had proposed before was great, but seeing something distinctly different from everything else that's been built around there, you have the thing blurred, uh, Maison Green and then the, um, why am I blanking on the other building?
Avidor.
Avidor. Uh, those are great features, but to get something that, um, even though it's separate kind of suburban style, but like having a different use in this dense area is just, it's inherently making it more diverse and will strengthen the area. To your point, bringing more people there during the day, freeing up parking and other opportunities at the night is like, that's, that's something that we haven't seen with proposed uses even on the public work site, where one of the exciting opportunities there was like a sixteen story tower with a big open field that basically had a bunch of parking under it. And it really didn't make sense for the developer, the city to build all this extra parking for no real reason except for like a surge use. So I think this is a great opportunity to build something for a primary use, but then could accommodate that surge. So I see this as not a stretch for TIF like other things are, where it's like, come, please give us some money. But like, there is a true benefit that you could sell with providing off our parking on this side. You got the, the structure parking across the railroad, but to think someone's gonna park there and walk to here in the winter, they'll do it, but to have that parking right there for this building, even Hilltop or maybe what appears across the street is, is great. So like the use, I'm a huge fan of and then to make it multi-use with, where you have C focusing on a retail ground level use to activate that corner is like the, the perfect combination. So it's just, this is exciting to see. Uh, one, one piece of the development framework, I'll talk about two of them, but one of the guiding principles, um, oh gosh, now I'm not gonna find it. Anyways, it's turning perceived barriers into opportunities. So a lot of times we hear about the topography being a challenge. I mean, when you just look at this site, it's an unsettling sight. You have the freeway right there, you have a roundabout, you have this curve, you have the frontage road swooping in, it is just movement of vehicles all around your building. So it is, uh, like, how do you turn, turn that perceived barrier into an opportunity? And I think the office use again is like a, is a good use to do it, having that commercial use on the south side and then kind of what you've done with the shape and orientation is really good. So last time, one of the proposals, again, one of the perceived barriers is actually what the city's built is that large retaining wall around the corner. And you guys proposed to take that away the last time and I was excited to see that again removed. If they didn't propose that, like just as a pedestrian, you're walking there, like you literally don't see anything. I mean, that wall's taller than you and it's even more unsettling. You're just pinched between traffic, but to kind of make a pocket park, even if it's not utilized, but just having landscaping with like more space to the building, cause the previous project had the building pretty tight to that corner. So that's just a good way to turn that barrier into an opportunity. Whether or not people gather, it just will add pleasantry to that terrace and the other terraces and the sidewalk. So that was awesome. Uh, the, let's see, the overall orientation and shape and look, one thing that I've always pointed out during any of these, and it kind of speaks to the experience, is page eighteen of the development framework. It is the look north up Arcadia. And I don't, I don't think I've seen anyone do it well, cause again, you're hoping the other side of the street does that so you can match to it. One of the proposals for the public work site had a version that looked very similar to this with like artists loft stepping up the hill, really activates the street, but it also shows kind of like a, a very wide terrace, like sidewalk on the west side. And you guys having a ten-foot sidewalk is no, I mean, that's a big concession. So like keeping that wide sidewalk, I think, you know, is still going to allow that other side to kind of mirror it. But the one thing that I see that lacks with the shape and orientation of what we're, what we, at least as a community envisioned, is kind of stepping back and having more of that human scale right along Arcadia. So, um, the aerial that you have, that's nice to see. I mean, you see it from above, but if you're down at the roundabout and then you start walking up that sidewalk, I mean, it's gonna be a really tall building really close to you. So one idea that we tend to see in the, in the Southdale area is, you know, at least stepping back. So I see, you know, like even going one column row from your depiction there, stepping that back, maybe bringing the, the mass of the building forward to kind of eat some of that, the roof of C, maybe cover some of that parking, but still expose it with tilt, stilt. That'll just be easier for maintenance, easier to build if you start matching columns. But then allowing it to step back along Arcadia, even if it's like a twenty-foot column spacing, you know, that could allow you to run your terrace, you know, along Arcadia and then kind of have either private office balconies or, you know, other amenity balconies for the office, but it also just, the effect of it down below is it humanizes that scale as you know about. But then it'd bring it closer to kind of what the framework imagines and I'd, I think I'd feel a little better about the orientation being opposite of what I'd expect. But for the reasons you described, I think that's a good way to go with the orientation. As it relates to the roof, um, depending on what you would want to harness with, you know, we allow rooftop dining. Um, if you want to, if it were a restaurant and you wanted to have options of that terrace in front, but also a rooftop thing, or if it's just a much, you know, bigger office type of roof, I mean, I could picture that being like this extremely pleasant looking like green roof, even for all the office people to look down at, or maybe you eat up some of the usable space with a bunch more kind of landscaping. I'm just trying to picture like, as others mentioned, as you get to this corner, it is like a prominent welcoming gateway to this area. I think how you have it turned, like has some great opportunity, but it, yeah, if you could see some greenery up top and you have that terrace and that cascading hill with some trees, like it'd be a really nice feature for that experience as people come around. One other thing that came up that you guys added the last time was, um, a sidewalk all the way around the building. It looks like you have a version of that, just a little smaller, almost like a little footpath. Can you explain what that is?
So initially, we're, we're looking at it for egress out of that stair particularly.
Oh, okay.
But I, I think as a team and looking at that further, we are kind of questioning the validity of needing that. Obviously we'll need egress, um, from that stair, but let's, if it were to just go, for instance, back out to the west, um, we imagine that, that's still probably, you know, we can't imagine somebody really utilizing that sidewalk to go around the building frankly, especially if we've done a good job of creating a, an active public space where they're gonna take the, the wider, better looking path of the scenario sidewalk around the building to the north.
One thing I'd say is like, I, cause we gotta think of the future too. If that, if and when that frontage road eventually does change and, and like it should run to the east of this building and maybe that disappears. And whatever redevelops possibly to the north, like treating the building with foresides is good. So as long as a building's not going too close to the property line where we come put a sidewalk, I'd still think it'd be better if you had. I'd still think it'd be better if you had something there. Just to give tenants the opportunity, if you come out of that elevator, instead of walking through the parking garage, you could actually walk the path. And then I guess one other question about opportunity is there is that kind of trapezoidal wedge to the east. Have you thought about like articulating the building out once you get above grade? Or you just keep in that green space? Or is there something you could do with the sidewalk there that now you cut the angle off? And kind of just get people closer to head in east on Eden?
Yeah, I mean, part of, you know, the, the sort of real estate developer in our, in, in the internal real estate developer in all of us wants to, you know, enlarge the footprint and take more area. But once we started getting civil and landscape involved, they quickly pointed out like, what's your stormwater strategy? So some of the site, some of this area has to remain unbuilt so that we can, so that we can locate tanks for stormwater. But yeah, I mean, it's possible the, the building could push out toward that. It's, it's possible. I, I think, I think we'll ultimately treat that trapezoid somehow.
Sure, okay.
It won't be unthought of.
That's, that's what I was getting to.
We're just not sure how to use it yet.
Cause even if you hung the sidewalk down that, you know, and then, you know, really dress up with some landscaping or in between, you know? I mean, you got a freeway right there. So again, if, if someone's coming out of the building, out of that stairwell and they want to, some, maybe they want to walk east to that restaurant right over here, just having a nicer path to do that versus walk through the parking garage. Just all, all that stuff matters. It's the little things really, that just see that as a little opportunity, whatever it might be to sweeten, sweeten the deal. Plus it's like, if you extend toward the freeway of all the variances that we'd be a fan of, like that's definitely one. So even if the whole building could shift like five feet east, like I'd prefer that over it in the same place. So there's probably things you've thought of, but just providing a little more relief along Arcadia, which is like either to match at page eighteen or just start to step back and physically move the building back. It'll, it's good, but everything you're doing just in general, configuration is like sticking to the plan. Like where you have parking, even the surface parking is behind the building. You know, it really doesn't interrupt like the vibe as you're walking around it or driving around it. Last couple of things. So it was talked about the parking. So just to be clear, tenants would be expected to be in P1, P2, kind of that's just where you're thinking right now. And then level one, which we're looking at would more or less maybe be guests or some tenants?
You would have tenants as well.
Okay.
So I think we get, yeah, we get a hundred and, what is that, a hundred and forty, give or take? Or I'm sorry, two forty down on the two levels. So we'd have some, uh, we still have to kind of figure all that out, you know, where, where access points would be, you know, is there a garage door here as you go down or is it at the bottom or, you know, this would all be open always. But as you go down, it may be secured.
Are you picturing from all sides, or let's say the north and the east and that fraction of the south side to have it open with the columns exposed? Or might you, like if you did bring the building forward and covered some of that parking, just from like a security, a warmth, other type of perspectives, all seasons would, like have you considered covering it?
I don't think we would want to fully enclose it, but we've talked about how do we screen it properly?
Okay.
How are we looking at that? The idea is that this floor would be open.
Okay. I like the nod to the stilts as, as was discussed. The entry points were talked about just for vehicular access. Like I was trying, like just looked at this forever, just seeing, could there be a different way? But with doubling the parking and having multiple uses, it, I think it goes more to what Commissioner Elkhire was saying of like, Arcadia, especially at that exact point is pretty steep, especially I wonder if people coming down that hill. So if someone's waiting to turn left into that entry point and they're waiting for pedestrian, got cars sliding. So it'd be nice to see no parking, but I think that also would benefit the building stepping back. Like a car could come off the street and at least just safely, you know, tuck in there, you know, before, you know, either flying into it. You know, just a little more spacer, I think would just provide a little more relief from a safety perspective. One last, two last questions. So ground level height, you know, we've had some reckoning in the city of, you know, our Southdale area has kind of, you know, we want twenty feet. People want to propose as little as possible. If you are picturing a ground level, like commercial office or retail, what, what are you picturing for your first level height? It, it looks a little taller than the other ones, but I just, just out of curiosity.
Approximately right now, we're at about eighteen feet.
Oh, nice. Okay. Sweet. That's, that is.
With, with the ability, probably, you know, plus or minus a foot or so.
Yeah.
In either direction, but.
Oh, that's great.
We'd like to stay prominent at that first level.
And that speaks to kind of flexibility. And then again, if things were to shift or things step back, you know, having eighteen feet wouldn't look awkward. And then also like inside, that's a, that's a nice lobby, very spacious. As far as the look, as it was discussed, there's some like, you know, transparency with it. Any other type of features that you're just thinking about, but as placeholders you haven't put in? I mean, what would you love to do here?
Likely be some additional outdoor space somewhere in the, in the building. Whether that's a, a large balcony or terrace additional to what you're seeing as number D. And then I, I think, you know, we set sort of design guidelines with OPUS. One of them is that we don't want an all glass tower. So I, I think, you know, one of the things we're going to be looking at is what does that infill and that fenestration look like once you start to break it down into the scale and it's not just an all glass curtain wall building? So those are the things we're looking at currently.
All right. And then this would be the last item. So what we're not seeing here, but obviously during your formal proposal would be good is to get some glimpses of what it would be like at pedestrian level. Thinking down by the roundabout, again, pulling away that wall, stepping it back's good, but still like, you know, it's pretty looming up to the building and you'll probably have structural elements exposed. So even along like that whole glass wall with C, which you said you'd have entrances. Just any other like architectural features or articulations that can break up that and make it look like different frontages or even like the exposed foundation wall. You know, if there's eight feet of exposed, what else could you do to just make it look a little better? Or just cover it and put plants? Just thinking, but that's all I have, which was a lot.
Emmy, can I ask a clarifying question? The, um, sorry, Arcadia A is supposed to be their primary entrance? That's correct?
Yeah.
And there is currently parking allowed on the opposite side of the street, right? It is just on the west side.
On the west side as you go down the hill.
So if people are coming off of highway a hundred or coming from other parts, they're going to be coming down arc, the executions are going to come down Arcadia past the Starbucks line, take a left into the building?
Or, or coming from the, if they're coming from the north, correct?
If they're coming from the north, okay. Does the city want that to be the entrance or is that a, a design choice that you guys have made?
I would say a little bit of both. That's where we looked at, our deliveries were there when we had the retail there on the, on the housing proposal. With the grades, we're trying to maintain two vehicular access points without having to do any significant ramping. These two access points work fairly well because the low point of the site is actually at the roundabout. So you're actually, I don't want to say that it's at the same grade, but you're coming in fairly close to the same grade at the two access points.
Got it. Okay.
So you're kind of high at the Eden Avenue and you're high at the Arcadia and then you drop down at the roundabout.
But it is preferable for a flow of business that you don't both enter and exit on Eden?
Yes, yes, that, that would be preferable. I'm very curious to see the traffic study. We had a lot of conversations about our access point here on the housing and it.
Lot of conversations, people concerned about it, for it.
We ultimately did not have an entrance here for the housing.
Okay, thank you.
We only had an entrance, well, it moved around a lot, but this is the most desirable and most logical, given the grades, I would say.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying.
Just while you're on the subject, Commissioner Hahn, that's a great point. But you could also, if you're coming from the north, you could also go straight across Vernon and then come out on this frontage road. You could skip the Starbucks line. You'd be ended up, you'd, you'd end up on Arcadia, turn left and then left right into the ramp, which I think is what I would do.
That's real. Well, yeah, that, I mean, that's all I had. Any other questions, comments, discussion? I'll really appreciate you coming here. This is exciting to see. We hope to see some great changes next time you're back and best of luck till you get there. Hopefully the market just keeps like getting exciting.
That's right. Thank you all for all the comments and feedback. We look forward to seeing you soon. Thanks.
Take care. All right. Thank you. That was the first report and recommendation, the sketch plan for fifty one hundred and even avenue. And now we will move to our advisory communication regarding parking. We got Addison and Commissioner Elkhire will present.
Just curious.
Yeah, nine minutes.
Nine minutes.
If anyone would like a bio break, we got a couple of minutes. All right, three minutes. If you want to drink a water, bathroom break.
Does it go backwards? Yes. This would usually happen.
All right, let's go. Oh, let's not go.
Our work during 2024 on work plan initiative number four, which was just to ground everyone, consideration of future of parking in Adina to identify parking initiatives to pursue in the next 10 to 15 years, in what order and what commission's resources should be assigned to each. Planning Commission will be the lead. Transportation Commission and Energy and Environment will review and comment on final report and recommendation from the Planning Commission. So just a word about scope, you'll note that it says identify parking initiatives to pursue. So I think the best analogy here is that we're writing a menu, we're not actually cooking the food. So you're not going to see any great progressive parking reformations in this deck. What we're doing is prescribing an action plan for the future, what we should be considering as a city in the future. And because Adina's vision for the future is documented in several adopted plans, we use that as the basis to do our investigation of what we should be looking at in the parking realm. So we reviewed the comprehensive plan, transportation, land use and environment chapters, the climate action plan and the living streets plan to look for insights into opportunities for parking projects in our city. And you can see to the right there, we reviewed the documents, we identified themes to parking, links to parking, created a plan for future parking initiatives and then reviewed that with staff and with the commissioners that were the commissions that were part of the work. On the left, you can see the, the themes that are linked to parking. I think the only one that's probably not self-explanatory might be number five as far as a link to parking. In the document, so there's a, the, the four-page document that's actually going to go to the city council mentions in it that it's been widely reported that there's more than a billion parking spaces in the United States and that we have more square footage assigned to each car than we do assigned to each person for housing in our country. So that just underscores the land use implications of parking generally, takes up a lot of space. So the more space you have assigned to parking, the less space you have for green space, trees and the other things that we value in our community. So each of these themes has a link to parking and we've grouped and combined them into four project opportunities. And we'll say a little bit more about each one, starting with the parking audit. Parking audit is intended to discover the current situation in our city. So if you recall a few years back, the US Bank project, I think it was seventy twenty-five France included a ramp. I think it was a six-story ramp on one of the quadrants of the spot. And there was a lot of conversation at the Planning Commission and also at the city council about whether Southdale was overparked or underparked and whether we needed a six-story parking ramp or whether we didn't. And it would be useful for us as planners and as a city to know whether Southdale is overparked or underparked because we might make different decisions on future projects if we knew that. So this would be an effort that would be a collaboration between planning and transportation. And it would have characteristics of be organized by commercial node. It would quantify off-street and on-street capacity and usage, thereby identify. and that we have more square footage assigned to each car than we do assigned to each person for housing in our country. So that just underscores the land use implications of parking generally. Takes up a lot of space. So the more space you have assigned to parking, the less space you have for green space, trees, and the other things that we value in our community. So each of these themes has a link to parking, and we've grouped and combined them into four project opportunities. I'll say a little bit more about each one, starting with the parking audit. Parking audit is intended to discover the current situation in our city. So if you recall, a few years back, the U.S. Bank Project, I think it was 7025 France, included a ramp. I think it was a six-story ramp on one of the quadrants of the spot. And there was a lot of conversation at the Planning Commission and also at the city council about whether Southdale was overparked or underparked, and whether we needed a six-story parking ramp or whether we didn't. And it would be useful for us as planners and as a city to know whether Southdale is overparked or underparked, because we might make different decisions on future projects if we knew that. So this would be an effort that would be a collaboration between planning and transportation. And it would have characteristics of be organized by commercial node. It would quantify off-street and on-street capacity and usage, thereby identifying surplus and shortage, whether you're overparked and underparked. And it would recommend policy options to increase efficient land use. Next part has to do with off-street parking. This would be something, because it's mainly land use, it would be our responsibility as a planning commission. In 2022, we updated the off-street parking ordinance after about 50 years with the same ordinance. I think the notion is that our work is not necessarily done, that there are more opportunities for improving our off-street parking policy in the city. So we would propose an update to the 2022 off-street parking ordinance, which includes potentially reducing commercial minimums, given the environmental changes, updating incentives near transit. So that includes things like, well, what is the definition of near? Should it be closer or farther? And also, what are the scale of the incentives that we offer for off-street parking minimums near transit? Could have new incentives and trade-offs for active transportation facilities, like giving incentives for reducing off-street parking if you replace it with pedestrian facilities or bike facilities or green space or any number of things that we should be looking at or could be looking at. Reducing minimums near district parking, updating electric vehicle parking standards, updating bike and e-bike parking standards, and updating surface parking standards. The notion there is that there are better and worse ways to design a surface parking lot. If we're going to have a surface parking lot, we might as well design it the right way. That has to do with the position on the lot, how it's shielded from the street, and generally what it looks like. On on-street parking, we're proposing to create a new on-street parking plan. This would be a new tool for planners. It would be a collaboration between the Transportation Commission and the Energy and Environment Commission. And the key opportunities that we see to evaluate here are specific goals for replacement of on-street parking with bike or ped facilities, street trees and green space, transit access, and other productive uses, especially where district parking is available. So if you look at 50th and France has excellent district parking, and yet we still allow street parking on the west side of France. That space potentially could be repurposed to something more productive, bike facilities, bike parking, street furniture, pedestrian space, lots of other things we could do with that other than park cars. Secondly, specific goals for one-side no parking on select streets in residential zones to create bike facilities. So for example, I'm not recommending this particularly, but for example, if we were trying to find a way to connect 50th and France and 44th and France by bike that was in France Avenue, you could find a street, a route through the residential neighborhoods, designate them one-side no parking, and use the space that you freed up for bike facilities for a really good bike route from that point to, or from 50th and France to 44th and France. We'd like to see specific goals for strategic use of one-way traffic to create space for bike facilities and preserve parking. I can't think of a single one-way street in Adana. I'm sure there must be one or two, but there certainly aren't very many. And that's a way that we can reduce the number, the amount of space used for traffic and re-purpose it to more productive uses on bikes. And also bike and e-parking standards in commercial nodes. Finally, district parking, which we've already talked about some. It can be a really effective tool in car-based communities like ours to help create pedestrian-friendly nodes. It's really hard to do in fully developed cities like ours. However, we do have some good examples, like 50th and France, like 44th and France, and like Grandview. These can work really well and help improve the pedestrian environment that they serve. It is hard to develop, but we will improve our chances if we plan ahead and identify nodes in our city where we would like to have district parking. So for example, someday 70th and Cahill is going to be redeveloped. And if we have in our minds that we want, as part of that redevelopment, to try to find a way to create district parking there, it's better for us to know that now than when the project comes to us for review. This would be a planning committee project, and the key elements of it would be be informed by the parking audit and organized by commercial node. So if you take those four categories of projects, you organize them in an iterative way over the next 11 years. That's what we would be proposing to do. The reason it has to be iterative is because it's always changing. If we go after off-street parking once and implement for a few years, the world's going to change. You didn't need to go after it again. Probably the best practice on off-street parking ordinance is not to wait 50 years before you do it again. So it's a, it's a never-ending cycle of improvement is what we're, what we're really recommending. These projects will compete for resources with other things that will be going on during this timeframe. There's really nothing we can do about that, except we need a place to start. So this is our starting point for a schedule, knowing that we're going to be working on the comprehensive plan during some of this time. And we'll just have to sort all that out as we go along. So what we're asking for tonight is to adopt the 2024 parking advisory communication and forward to the city council. Before I do that, I'd ask Commissioner Day and Commissioner Hahnemann if they have anything they wanted to add. I didn't tell you I was going to do this. Sorry.
That's okay. The only thing, you know, as you go through, for anybody that's watching, both now or later, you know, is that these are opportunities, and they're not all one-size-fits-all for parts of the city. So I know sometimes we can have a reaction to say, we're going to get rid of parking all over the place in Adana and stuff. We're talking about areas where it makes sense, right? Where we have district parking, where we have opportunities right now. And it's, you know, like you said, kind of a menu, right? Is that, right? So a menu for us to choose from, and it just informs the decision-making process, and it's not a wholesale, all right, we're going to put bike lanes on every street in Adana or turn everything into one way, right? It's, it's not that aggressive. It's a roadmap with great opportunities. And just lastly, too, I appreciate your effort leading this. You know, we contributed, but you definitely took the bull by the horn, bull by the horns, and did the majority of the heavy lifting on this. So thank you.
I'd echo that. Yeoman chair, for sure. I think what I found most exciting, reading through the guiding documents and having these discussions, is there are, I think you've called it the give-to-get that we're used to with the PUD, but there are ways to create benefits for the city by creating a plan and a process for evaluating. If you're right across the street from a bus stop, I think it makes sense that you might not need to build as much parking, right? And so when we define that process and we think about all the things, I think it helps create benefits for everyone and also gives developers and projects flexibility within common sense parameters.
All right. Thank you. So I guess now we'd open for any questions, or just what's up to you, Chair?
Yeah, I'd say questions, discussions, but this is phenomenal, like really great work. It's exciting to think about. Yeah.
So thank you. I, you know, parking is one of those things where, you know, you made it, give it more life than, you know, it's a boring topic, right? But you gave it more life. Yes, I'm actually quite excited now. So when it comes to the audit, I just want to think about this for a second. So audit by district, and I'm just kind of reading through this, and I, and it makes complete sense. So if just, you know, if let's just say, Southdale District and 50th and France districts, they might have different parking rules, right? Is how you're thinking about it? You're not thinking about it as an entire city. Have one set of standards, but by district, by district, we have different standards. So let's just say you can only park on this side of the street in this district, but you could park on this side of the street in this district. Is that kind of how you're thinking about it?
The, the parking audit has less to do with ordinance and more to do with actually what's happening. So you would look at an area, it's just, Southdale is so big, let's use a smaller example.
Like inventory might be another word you could use.
Inventory is a good word. Yeah. So you'd look at 44th and France Business Node and you say, okay, there's X number of on-street spots, there's Y number of off-street spots. If you add up the spots for all the businesses that are permitted on that corner, giving you this capacity, and then you would compare that to usage, say peak usage in that area, and say, wow, it's overparked or it's underparked. There's a problem here, one way or the other. So it's all, it's a, it's like a system, it's a, it's a quantitative view of a system rather than having anything to do with what's in the ordinance.
Gotcha. So I like that. So essentially, if we think of Southdale, you could say, for this quarter or this month, it goes up to 85%, and then it dips back down to 60%. And that gives you a sense of if it's overparked or underparked, or you might even say it goes over, over 100%. So it's underparked, right? And then it kind of dips back down. So like that kind of flow and volume and how it stretches and expands and contracts is kind of part of the audit.
Sure. You can make a heat map of Southdale that shows you where you're parking excess, you got green for excess, red for shortage. You could map out the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay. I know we talked about parking a little bit, that the different developers, and I'm guessing, and I'm not sure where this is going to sit, but if we had a recommendation, I'm thinking on the road, right, of if your development property only is at capacity at 85%, then you are mandated to share that space with somebody else. Let's just say we have that. Would that come from the, the, the audit would tell us if it's, what it's the, you know, how much parking is there and the volumes and the capacity. But then you have update the off-street parking ordinance. Can I go through that? That's when we will start writing and designing what the rules should be by district.
You could. I'm, that's not necessarily recommended here, but you could do that. I mean, one of the potential solutions in the future would be overlays, where you could say, oh, in these areas, it's this rule set, and in those areas, it's a different rule set. We're not necessarily recommending that, but it could happen that way. But the parking audit or inventory is a way to guide policy in that, at least project by project, and possibly within the ordinance. If you wanted to have, there are cities that have dynamic parking ordinances where if you are, if you're in a place where there's a, that's overparked, your off-street parking requirements are less, and vice versa. I'm not, we're not suggesting in this document that that's what we should do, but that's what could be done. But you really don't know any of that unless you do a parking inventory and figure out where you're at today. So that gives you lots of options for what you could do next if you have a really rigorous understanding of where you are today.
Last question. So in the recommendations, right, you have this like cycle, 26, 27, 28, implementation, 33, 34, 34. Are you saying that we're going to go through the audit process every eight years or so, or, and then we just kind of audit, create, update, create, audit? Like, is that kind of the idea?
Yes.
Okay.
So we don't get 50 years behind again. Presumably, it'll be incrementally easier if it's iterative.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. I think that helped a lot, because I, I love how you have like the menu analogy, right? We're building a menu, but not, right, you're not creating the food. I think that helps a lot. So thank you.
Other questions down here? Yes, maybe just my only question regarding, kind of, when you talked about districts, and once you get past the inventory phase, and you might have mentioned, I missed it, or at least as a tool to inform next decisions, but like, where do we have small area plans in place? We tend to have some discussion within those about some of those solutions and already have some insight. I'm just thinking of 44th and France of, there was some preliminary counts, and those type of, that type of inventory, at least for the development of the small area plan, was like, we should really try to do district parking back here as like the tool to go forward to mitigate against the other things. I see what you're saying. I'm just, I'm just thinking logically, once you do the inventory, I would say district and small area plans ought to have something good in there to reference and use as kind of reinforcement.
I think that's right.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
All right. So the job here is we would welcome a motion, right, to approve the communication advisory to the advisory communication to the city council?
Motion to adopt the 2024 parking advisory communication and forward to council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I guess I could have looked at the screen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Great job, team. And that concludes the second of two reports and recommendations. And so we move on to Chair and member comments. I guess I'll, I'll just kick off one thing, or maybe three things, and then, and then turn it over to you. First, a couple of updates. This will probably steal someone Kerry's thunder, but the council voted unanimously for the variance appeal. So for the one with, you know, the road running through their backyard, that did ultimately get approved, in case you were curious. The other one was the Kevin Keyes site, I'm sure you're all aware, but that was voted down three to two. It required a four-to-one supermajority because it involved a comprehensive plan amendment. And I'd say just one main takeaway is like, that's important of getting the comprehensive plan in line with the state of the community, because if it only required, if that was consistent with the zoning, it would have only required a three to two, and likely that project would have went forward. As you might recall, we voted to support that unanimously. So that was definitely a letdown to see. Yeah.
When we do a new comprehensive plan, does that give us the opportunity to change how things are currently, or do we have to go through an amendment process as well?
Kerry can speak to that, but that is, like, that is where there's an opportunity to do it. But he can speak to maybe more specifics.
Yep. So yes and yes. We're creating a whole new land use plan. So we can take it parcel, however we decide to do it, by area, by parcel.
I mean, interestingly enough, the mayor sided with the comprehensive plan when he voted, which I'm like, right, of course, that's fine. I mean, you know, we, we accepted this and we were all fine with it. And I think he was just on the other side of the fence, and he's like, good or bad, comprehensive plan, that's legitimate.
And that's, I guess, again, my message of like, and, you know, studying the areas of potential change, like, all, like, those updates are very important. So if someone arbitrarily changed something in 1980 to, to the residential use there, and we never thought about it and never pushed it, like, that didn't help that project in particular.
I think we also should be thinking about when we're evaluating projects, then being, as we get closer and as we're doing that project, being consistent to that perspective, that the comprehensive plan is the guiding document, not how things are currently zoned or what current expectations may be. Like, that's the opportunity for everyone to set what they want, and then that should be the guiding document.
Correct. Were you going to add something?
Just the detail that, that lot is particularly challenged because it's surrounded by residential. So we're not going to be able to just zone that one little lot for commercial, going in the comprehensive plan update, right? So it's, it's just, it's a challenging site, for sure, because everybody wants to, it's different ideas. So.
Yeah, we could have a whole discussion on that site, and we should save it, save it for another day. The third thing I was going to mention, just change on the commission. Commissioner Miranda resigned early from his role. His term was ending in March. And, you know, sad to see him go, although early, but we'll look to kind of celebrate and honor him come March, when we have the transition to whoever is
when we have the transition to whoever is filling his role anyway. And, yeah. He did a lot of great work for a lot of time, so it's important for us to celebrate people's good, hard work. And I look forward to March to making sure everyone knows about how many good things he did. That's all I had. Mr. Day?
Just one additional comment, so spurs from that. Some of them, people are watching or still watching later, right? There still is time to apply for commissions. So the deadline is the 19th. So you can go, I had, had it memorized that I didn't write it down, but the website name for the volunteer for Adana. I'm sure if you search commission volunteer opportunities for Adana, you can find it. But there's still time. You know, personal experience, very rewarding to be on any commission and engage more with the city. And, you know, certainly if anybody has any questions about what being on a commission entails, what the experience is like, they can reach out. And I'm sure probably other commissioners would feel the same way that if anybody reached out, they'd be willing to share their experiences and how rewarding it's been. So, yeah.
I guess one thing to add back onto that. So with Commissioner Miranda's role as vice chair, just so people think, we won't fill that until probably March, right, Kerry? So just for other commissioners, just reach out to me and/or Kerry. If you have interest in like stepping up, I know Commissioner Bornstein's secretary. So if you want to take that logical step up the ladder and reach high for the stars, let us.
What does, just for everybody's benefit, what does vice chair entail in a sense?
Yeah, so, you know, it's, the main thing is like, if I'm not here, you got to run the show. And that's, that's, that's an important task because I am not here at times.
Something you can give him one second to thought too, so feel free to have at it.
Yeah, we'll have to do regardless. And as we think forward, my, my final term starts in March and I'm not looking to run this out until the end. I'm, I'm looking to like transition to more of a past-chair role, just to help. So expediting that, it's kind of two steps. Like, it'd be good to be a vice chair fill-in at times, get the experience and then transition over whenever that times make sense. But I'm ready and willing to look at who's next and start the path to step out of the way and make that transition seamless, so. That was the fourth thing, maybe, maybe third with an asterisk, but.
I think I signed a document once as secretary and I'm pretty good about it. Probably been performing that role. So I might just stay put. Only once, girl? That job had a lot of signing to do there, apparently.
That's all I got. Any other commissioners with comments?
Nothing else for me to add. I was going to give you the update on those projects, but well done in your description of the decisions.
All right. Well, thank you, staff as always. Thank you all of the technicians and people behind the scenes making this happen and come together and connecting us to people out there. A lot of goes in, a lot of stuff goes into this, so we appreciate your awesome work. Last order of business adjournment.
Motion closed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, everyone.